Of 6th January 2016, and if all rise and follow me in the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and Happy New Year to everybody, and please recall the role of Mr. Petches.
Commissioner Eggleston.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Ruhl.
Here.
Chair Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Wu.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith.
With that, there are no special orders of business tonight, however, we do have minutes to approve from the study session of December 3rd, 2015. Is there any corrections at all?
Yes, I have one small observation here, correction, on item, it was the last item, I believe it was D, 10th comment, Planning Commission comment. I believe the intent there was to say "small town."
What pages?
I'm sorry, page, I believe it was page 8.
Are you in the study?
Page 9. Yes, okay.
For the study session?
Oh, we are.
We're approving the study.
That's, I'm sorry, that's for the Planning Commission meeting.
We're a little rusty for Christmas break here. Okay, if there are no corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the study session notes of...
I'll make a motion that we approve the meetings of the study session minutes from December 3rd, 2015.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. With that, we'll now entertain possible corrections to the Planning Commission meeting notes of December 16, 2015. And with that...
Yes, yes. So it would be Planning Commission comment for item D, okay, and it was about the 10th comment, and I believe the comment read "small time," the intent was "small town." I can read the...
No, that's good. Yeah, I see it.
So, it reads, suggested that some of the existing signage adds to the city's "small town charm" and evokes feelings of nostalgia for past times. I believe that was the intent.
Okay, I agree with it.
I have an additional minor change to the minutes. Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Blackwell, for pointing that out. I think it was my comments. The next one, it says, on the last line, it says, "First Amendment should be Fifth." It's basically a taking claim, so it's a Fifth Amendment.
Fifth Amendment v. First.
Right.
Hmm? Fifth Amendment? That's self-incrimination.
Fifth Amendment is about due process and adjusted compensation, namely, the taking cases are all from Fifth.
Uh, could I ask the, yes, Assistant City Attorney?
No, First is about free speech and establishment, of course. No, that comment was made by me, I think.
Page 9?
Page 9, in the middle of...
11th, 11th bullet down, and in the last line it says, "First Amendment..."
You may be right. Okay, that was a discussion about a political sign? If that's a political sign, then it's First Amendment.
It's First Amendment.
Because I mentioned a Fifth, but in another occasion, so don't worry about it.
Okay, so are we clear on that? Okay. With that, any other corrections to the Planning Commission minutes of 16 December?
I will move that we accept the Planning Commission meetings of 16 December with the Commissioner's Blackwell change from "times" to "town."
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Eggleston, Mr. Commissioner Eggleston, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. With that, we'll go into oral communication. Members of the audience may address the Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on our agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward a microphone and state your name and city of residence and make your presentation. You'll be limited to three minutes. In this case, we have Mr. Joe Janis who wishes to talk to us.
Hey, guys. I was here last night at the council meeting, and I know that on the 20th, you guys are going to discuss short-term vacation rentals, but I wanted to come and let you know that I was here last night. The council failed to pass the memorandum, and I guess the, they've been growing, I guess last year they doubled. We have 400 some of these in our city now. I happened to just build a house in, on La Rambla. I went through planning and everything. We were doing it about three months ago. I've been a resident of the city for 33 years, and I have one across from me. It sleeps 20 people. It's like a resort, and we've had big groups there. I get waking up in the middle of the night. I have eight letters from all the residents around us to describe the problem, and what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you guys, is to send it to your emails so you can read these things. A lot of people think it's not a big deal, but living next to one, it is. Also, at the council meeting last night, I got all your addresses and everything from someone that passed this around a bunch of you guys. I don't know if you got that yet, but there's a, it's big business that is running this thing. They pack the hall, and there's not many people, the silent majority out there don't come to these things. So I want to just let you know that I'm going to be involved in this. My name's Joe Janis, and I'm going to send this stuff to your emails if I can. I also took a couple of pictures from my deck that shows, like, red solo cups on top of cars and people converging into this hotel, is what I call it. So anyhow, I will be seeing you on the 20th, and it won't take much more time of your time, but I just want to let you know.
Mr. Janis, he's actually sent it to the city planner. He will, in fact, re-address it to all of us. He'll send it to all of us.
That's a lot easier for me.
It's, uh, yeah, the staff...
But send it to that email address and I'll see if it comes.
The staff's very efficient about getting emails to us that the public can send in, so thank you for coming in.
Much shorter, isn't it?
Yeah. We watched. Okay, with that, if there are no other comments on the oral communication. We do have two items on our consent calendar tonight, prohibitions, parking pro, proposed parking prohibitions on Avenida Cabrillo with Mr. Frank. Do you round?
He was.
And proposed parking prohibition modifications in the North Beach area.
You're going to call it off for consent?
Yes.
Do we, yes, well, I understand that.
First you have to call it off for consent.
No, I'm just about ready to address that to the Commission. Do we, anybody want to call him up off of consent?
I do.
Okay. We have some questions on 7A, and how about 7B? A and B? Commissioner Eggleston, which one would you like to call? Both? A? Anybody called number B, position B at all?
I, okay.
Okay, then we would like to call up...
First, you should, uh, agree with, uh, one item, and then...
Yeah.
I will, I will move, I will move we approve the remainder of the consent calendar.
Right.
Okay, I have a motion to approve in a second by Eggleston, a motion by Ruhl, and all in favor for, to propose or approve 7B? In favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Proposed parking conditions on Avenida Cabrillo, Mr. Frank. 7A.
No, I don't have a presentation. Well, I'll first entertain if you just wanted to ask a question regarding the agenda report, or if you'd like a brief presentation.
Well, I'm concerned about this item. This is a parking area that is extremely heavily parked and restricted for parking, and I understand this is a catch, two catch basins.
Correct.
And it, to me, it would, it would seem that when it rains, which is infrequent, except we're having a lot of rain now, but when it does rain, that someone from the city can go down there and, and put some cones down there so that the catch basins can, you know, be properly utilized. I have catch basins in my neighborhood and cars park in front of them. This is an extremely heavily parked area, very parked area, and, and I know that there was suggestion of moving some parking up on the 100 block of Cabrillo, but, but this, that the 200 block is where people live, and this is where we need parking. So.
Mr. Ruhl.
Right, so, and I do understand that, that it's an extremely important asset in that part of the street and town. These are really two critical inlets. There's, it's right in a drainage, natural drainage basin, and so the Public Works Director and our Engineering Department's very concerned that if, if we don't have 24/7 access to those inlets during the rainy periods, that it could create a delay which could, of course, increase the risk for flooding. So you probably saw I forwarded an email from a resident, and they were suggesting that maybe we could make time limitations to try and focus on just the rainy season, and I'm definitely open to that. And, of course, I'm, and I do recognize, Commissioner, that that is an extremely important area for parking, so it's, we don't take it lightly, and it's a consideration.
Well, my suggestion is, you know, we know ahead of time when it's going to rain really heavy, and when we do need access to those drains, therefore, I, you know, it seems to me that the city can go out there and put cones around there, and for no parking for a specific period of time. So that's my suggestion.
Yes, Ruhl.
And, and just a reminder, one of them currently is painted red. It's not codified, so it's not in the ordinance, but...
Actually, I was down there today. It looks like both of them are painted. Somebody got their...
Oh, are they?
Somebody got some red paint on it. I sent you an email this afternoon, and I went down and looked at it again.
Yeah, someone did that. It wasn't before.
Somebody beat you to it.
That was, that was my question, because both, when I was down there, both of them were red painted, so if, if they've been red painted for a while, then there's no net loss.
I don't think so, but I don't think so, and I can tell you it wasn't in my direction.
No, and people park there anyway, so.
Do that, okay.
And then, then how would we, if we did it seasonally, how would that, how would that work? Would we put up temporary signage, or what?
Uh, we'd either, we'd do it one of two ways. We'd either sign it with the months, but considering they're such a small area, we'd probably go and repaint.
Just, just every, after nine months, you'd repaint it red, and three months later, you'd get painted white, something like that.
Exactly.
All right. Commissioner Ruhl.
Commissioner Eggleston's method is...
Yes, I noticed there existing paint, which is much longer than what you're proposing here. And then, on the fire hydrant side, the paint is about 20 feet long. That leaves as an unpainted curb, at the current condition, 28 feet long. That's, that accommodates one car, not two cars. So I think from a fire hydrant, the vehicle code requires 15 feet. I don't know who did that pen, but it's 20 feet now. On the fire hydrant side, and a 10 feet on the, on the inlet side, both are longer than what's needed, which causes the unpainted curb to be not long enough for, to accommodate two cars. If we do it per the vehicle code, and if we use your 16 total length centered throughout there, we should have enough for two cars, meaning 36 feet.
Huh.
I sent you an email late this afternoon, Tom, I was down there during the high-flying rain, and I noticed both were painted A.
Yeah.
B, the, the fire hydrant close by, yeah, it's like you can put a whole fire engine in there, and the side that's, the other side that's painted now is well in excess of your, is it 16 feet the city standard, the engineering standard?
It's, there is no engineering standard. That's actually the width of the inlet. That's where the 16 feet came from.
All right, they actually, you just paint the width of the inlet?
Yeah, with the aprons, right.
Okay, because I looked at the other inlets up and down the street, and some are not painted, some have two inches, some are not. I kind of agree why you'd want this particular set painted, because it's the low point in the whole street. That's where it hits the tip and goes back up.
It's the low point, that's the natural swell, right?
And that's the big swell. That's the only, but there's kind of an inconsistent painting up and down the whole street. Some of the ones are further up, that do have painted, there's a, one side's painted, one side's not.
Right.
You know, it's like, maybe the whole, a holistic approach of the whole street probably needs to be looked at, and I agree with Commissioner Ruhl that the, the fire hydrant is excessive length there, that we need to relook at that. Somebody's, the neighborhood's got some red paint and is doing a lot of work down there, and they're not helping out the area, but, but I kind of agree with, this two drains here, just because of the geography, but I would also agree, maybe we go to a seasonal effort. That was suggested in one of the emails here. Mr. Crandall?
I would say I agree with Don, that the seasonal seems reasonable, you know, what, middle of May, middle of September, something like that, that it's, you can park there, and then during the wet season, the risk to property is quite high if those things aren't maintained.
Right.
And I think that would be a reasonable recommendation.
Any other discussion? Is there a sense of the Commission that we make it a seasonal effort?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we forward this recommendation to the city council with the addition that the red stripe be from mid-May to mid-September, and otherwise it be white-stripped and allowed to park.
Yeah, whatever rainy season is defined as around here.
Yeah, I think we have a rainy season defined by the NPDS program, so...
Then let's do, instead of midway to mid-September, let's say the rainy season is defined by, who was it?
It's Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Regional Water Quality Control. It's defined by them.
Okay.
All right, meanwhile, look at the, the fire hydrant down there and...
Well, do you?
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that was a motion.
It's a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ruhl, second by Blackwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. On to item A, a public hearing process for, for various items on our calendar tonight. There's generally a, a public hearing with a staff presentation, followed by a, an applicant could, also can apply, speak not to exceed 10 minutes in public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following closure of a public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing and discuss issues, and act upon the matter by motion. With that, 7A is 2771 North El Camino Real, discretionary sign permit 15-269, Shorecliffs Monument Sign with Mr. Nicholas.
Yes, good evening, Planning Commissioners, Sean Nicholas. This is the discretionary sign permit request associated with the remodel of the existing Shorecliffs entry sign. I still believe everyone is aware it's located there in the middle of the road, the corner of Avenida Vicero and Camino Capistrano. I think this slide pretty much tells the whole story. On the upper left, you have the existing monument sign as it has since, existed since the mid-sixties or early sixties. To the right of it is a Photoshop of what the new proposed sign would look like. I can, as it states in the staff report, it does meet all applicable development standards. I would point out, to address the comments at Design Review Subcommittee, the Shorecliffs, as you can see, in the lower left, the blow-up more of the monument sign, the name Shorecliffs has been moved down to be more centered, and you can still see the applicant is proposing four small LED components to be tucked under the decorative cap proposed for the sign. Each of one of those four lights puts out the equivalent of two watts of, of light, so there'll be eight watts of light on each side. It'll be splashed down over the sign and just the sign face of the Shorecliffs. The Shorecliffs sign face itself is slightly inset, so again, it's, it'll be just located on the Shorecliffs portion, and also the reason why one of the other comments discussed at Design Review Subcommittee is taking the stone around the Shorecliffs portion, the sign face across the top, but to accomplish the, the low-level lighting and the splashing effect just over the sign face that they were hoping to achieve, they couldn't put the stone veneer across the front there. So that's why they have not done that one comment as addressed by DRC. Based on an analysis of the surrounding area and the intersection as it is today, staff is supportive of the proposed project as it is a low-level lighting and, and will be minimal impact to the existing intersection, and with that, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the proposed project subject to the test resolution. Staff and the applicant are available. Should there be any questions?
Does the applicant desire to speak on this matter at all?
Yes. Tom Marrier, I'm with the Shorecliffs Beach Club. As most of you know, this sign has been in dire need of a facelift for a long period of time. I think the only question that actually got raised was over the lighting, and what we've attempted to do was to make sure that the lights all shine down only, so there won't be any impact on any bright skies issues. The lights shine down only, and there are only eight watts of light on each side, and I, I'm hopeful that in the material that was provided to you that you had a chance to see some of the lights that are actually at that intersection. There are four large streetlights at the intersection already, and at the next intersection, there on Vicero and Cascavita, there are six large streetlights. So the only dark item at those two intersections is basically our sign. So we're trying to do our part to make sure that we don't cause any extra issues with the bright skies, any, any lighting issues, so that all of the light does shine down, and we'd be very grateful if you'd be supportive of our project, and I do have the, the gentleman that's going to do the work on the sign, if you've got questions of him as well, so, and he has samples with, with him tonight as well, if you wish to see those. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ruhl.
Yeah, I have a question about the lighting fixture.
Sure.
Shaunie just mentioned the light will be on top of the sign underneath the cap.
That is correct, sir.
And then you showed a bunch of images of the marble head. The light is sitting on the ground. What's the purpose of showing us the photo of a marble head lighting fixtures here?
In the staff report?
In the staff report.
That was information that was provided by the applicant to show comparisons to other lighting for other monument signs in the community. That wasn't something that staff prepared. That was something that the applicant asked be provided to Planning Commission as part of the information they provided for your review.
Okay, and then, if it's underneath the cap, how much do they project out?
The, the lights themselves? They're tucked under. They won't project out at all, because they're the thin, they, they have those thin LED lights now that are, that are like a, they're like, almost look like a, like a piece of ram, actually, you know, is what I think they look like, but they're extremely thin, and the cap overhangs the two sides of the wall, so it'll actually just sit underneath there and just be on the sign face, because as I mentioned, the Shorecliffs, where the sign faces of the Shorecliffs sign, it is inset, so you, it even allows for more ability for the lights in that area underneath the decorative cap to tuck in underneath and splash just down on the Shorecliffs sign portion.
Okay.
So you won't have any of the lights projecting out from this. You won't be anything visible out beyond the decorative cap at all, sir.
Okay, okay, I understand it. No, it doesn't have a section, so I had a hard time to find out. The second question is, this sign is located within the right-of-way public street. Do we have any city policy for occasions like that?
I can tell you that this has been reviewed by engineering and the city engineer himself, and it's been existing. It's an existing condition. It has been. There is a conditional approval regarding agreements that will be put in place should this be approved, that cities, that will protect the city, should there be any issues associated with it, and engineering is supportive of the project as conditioned.
Is this a grandfathered location, or do we still allow new monumentation to be built inside the right-of-way?
I can't, I can't tell you if this is across the board, if this would be permitted. I know that this is an existing condition in this case. I can't answer that fully if other new locations would be approved, but in terms of this case, it's existing, so city engineering is supportive of the upgrade in the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other, any other questions of staff? Okay, Mr. Black?
I have a question, Sean. What's the, what is the height of the existing?
I believe it's just under, tad under four and a half feet.
So it's about the same height?
It's going to be the exact same dimensions, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant, the applicant's builder, designer, or staff? Not, we'll close that portion and open the public hearing. Are there any cards to, if there's no dis, public hearing, speakers were requesting to speak, so we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion or discussion. Mr. Eggleston?
I'm supportive of, of the sign. I think it's a vast improvement over what's there from the 1960 type of sign, which is not historic, and if there are no further, well, you have a further, I would like to make a motion after you have a comment.
Go ahead and make the motion. You just said what I was going to say.
Oh, okay. I'd like to move the, the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving discretionary sign permit 15-269 Shorecliffs entry sign. I request to resurface an existing residential monument sign located at the intersection of Avenida Vicero and Camino, uh, Capistrano.
Okay, and for the record, that is Resolution Number PC 16002. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Passes 7-0. Good luck. Dark skies compliant.
Yes.
We actually await the ordinance for the rest of the intersection there.
I know.
With that, we'll go to item A, B, 635 Camino de los Maris, architectural permit 15-313, site plan permit 15-315. Are we, are we done over there? Minor conditional use permit 15-481 in Los Maris facade remodel. Mr. Nicholas continuing to stand before us.
Yes, good evening again, Planning Commissioners, Sean Nicholas, project planner. This is the Los Maris remodel, and we are doing a lot to improve aesthetics in the City of San Clemente today. So this is for a project located on Los Maris. I'm sure you're all very familiar with this building, located across the street from Ocean View Plaza and the Trader Joe's Ralph's Center there. It is the Doan Law Firm Building, and probably most of us know it as, right there. I had an interesting time describing the current architecture in your staff reports this evening. I'm sure we've all called it many interesting things over the years, but this evening, the applicant is proposing to go in a drastic, a drastically different direction with the architectural design, taking it into a Spanish level design consistent with our general plan requirements, especially the Los Maris requirements, focus area of the general plan, and at a gateway. So you can see here, this is a simulation of what they're proposing at the corner there of Los Maris and Agua, Caia Agua, right there to the right. You can see the existing movie theater facility. They are proposing, you can see the outdoor area, covered area for, to service the restaurant, to potential restaurant uses, and you can see also one of the two new accent features, entrances into the facility. The one there on the left will be more into the bank area. As you can tell, that they're adding some red tile roof. We have some material samples as well, should the Commission would like to see that. Wood trellis features are being proposed throughout, as well as smooth white stucco finish, and, and stone veneer to further accent the key entrances into the facility. Here's another view of the improvements I've seen further of Caia Agua, looking down towards Ocean View Plaza on the upper corner. You can see the existing architecture. They are proposing some amendments to the site to rework the, the parking a little bit. They had to make some modifications to change those corners, and particularly of the building, to square them off, to create those tower entrances, so they had to rework some of the areas they were able to maintain through this, the 79 existing parking spaces. As noted in your staff report, they are requesting a minor conditional use permit for a shared parking arrangement on site. We provided you the parking study provided, prepared by Walker Parking Study. Planning staff and also traffic engineering has reviewed the parking study and are in agreement with the findings and felt that it was based on good... agreement with the findings and felt that it was based on good ITE in the International Transportation Engineer Foundations. I brought this particular chart, it's chart three, from your staff report because I think this highlights the best, the potential peak demand of the facility. As I stated, that there are 79 parking spaces provided. As shown, based on the mix of uses, now with a bank on the first floor, two restaurant-type uses, and office on the second and third floor, the maximum peak demand, parking demand would be 77 spaces, which occurs at a weekday during December. That weekday, by the way, midday during the weekday is consistent with other peak utilization in other facilities in the city. You can also see that they've included the theater use on this chart as well, and that is because, as is noted in the staff report, they are encumbered by a parking agreement with the adjacent movie theater that during the weekdays after 5:00, they have full access to the parking and all day on weekends and holidays. And charts associated with the peak utilization is also provided to you in your staff report. Though staff does agree with the findings of the parking study, as we've done with other projects, we have included conditional approval number four, which does require a one-year review. And we set that up, staff set that up, that it would be once 100% of the first floor is occupied, and then 50% of the second and third floor. Being that we've never had any issues with the parking as it being an office space, the second and third floors being, continuing to be office, we felt that the majority of that space being leased would be a good indication of utilization. And then with 100% of the new use of the site with the bank and the restaurant uses being fully occupied and operational that year to evaluate any shortcomings or issues, and we can report back accordingly to the planning commission if any changes or modifications to hours of operation, as we have done in the past as well, needs to be incorporated in a later date. So with all of that, staff does recommend the planning commission support the proposed project and update and shared parking agreement, consistent with the attached resolution findings and conditions of approval. Staff and the applicant and the architect are available, should commission have any questions.
I was heartened by the fact that they used Walker for their parking study, which we've used in the downtown area. Three studies, I think, a decade under when Commissioner Eggleston was on the council, they do good work. So they're a very credible company to do parking studies. So there was a lot of credibility, in my view, anyway. With that, we have... Mr. Crandall, you have a question?
Yeah, real quick question, and I neglected to ask this at Design Review. When the restaurants come in, if they're going... Is there anything that will trigger us reviewing this again, once the restaurants apply for permits, that would give us an opportunity to re-review?
Parking.
Parking for the specific restaurants? Or would it just be if alcohol was served?
That would be it, if alcohol was served.
Okay.
Why the one year review, too? Commissioner Eggleston. Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
Shaun, are there any signs at the movie theater parking lot that direct folks over to the... So there's an agreement in place now so that folks can use the parking lot?
I do not know what the signs are at the theater.
There are signs.
There are signs at the theater.
Direct you to our parking lot, and then there's signs at our parking lot.
Okay.
And that is Mike Jolly, my applicant, this evening, who answered that from the crowd. And I can also tell you, I know that the theater has parking agreements with the other facilities to the east of the theater building as well, of the theater center as well.
So the agreements would be kept intact?
Yes, they inherited that when they purchased the building.
Thank you.
Mr. Ruhl.
Just to refresh my memory, is this part of Los Maris, is it an architectural overlay area or not?
It is not an architectural overlay, no, sir, but it is required to be Spanish, just Spanish architecture pursuant to the general plan, the Los Maris focus area, and the gateway.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Ruhl. I echo Chairman Brown's compliment to the parking study. I think it's a very high-quality parking analysis. That's the type of work we want to see. It's logically very clear information presented very well, so very good.
Thank you.
Okay, with the applicant care to speak at all at this time, come on up and state your name for the recording secretary.
Mike Jolly. I represent Crown Acquisitions. We're the owners of the property, and we're excited to do the project. I hired Bill Graber from our architecture, very, very good architect, who's done a lot of designs here in San Clemente. And, you know, my wife actually has an office in the building. We plan on moving into the building later when it's done. We're local. We live in Toledo. Crown, who's the headquarters, is Dana Point. We're actually going to move into the building. So we have a lot of heart into this, and it's been thought out, you know, very well. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions to the applicant? Well, thank you, and we appreciate your involvement in the town and making it better.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, one from the public that wishes to speak on this issue? We'll open the public comment. If not, we'll close the public discussion, and we'll go into discussion. Mr. Crandall.
Yeah, I just want to indicate that at Design Review, we study this very carefully as, you know, can you call it Spanish or not? And it is, has a touch of Spanish to it. Extremely difficult building to redesign and remodel and make it in any way financially feasible. And I think the architect did a good job with what he had. And it is a contemporary style. It may not be as Spanish as we would like, but I think it is in keeping with the intent and direction we're going. And I think it's a good, a good, I don't want to call it a compromise, but it is a good solution for the building they've got.
I'll just weigh my comments in that I think this is a very good design for this area, and I agree with you, Bart, you're the architect, you know, on Design Review that can tell whether this thing is financially feasible and how far you can go with your design. So you see the change of use in the first floor and how they try to accommodate that. I think the staff's got protections in here for the parking, the Walker parking study. So I'm very heartened by the project. By that, I'll defer over to Commissioner Blackwell.
Okay. Yes, I can appreciate this project. I think it's very well done. To mirror what Commissioner Crandall had said about the style, I think it would be a bit of a stretch to call it Spanish. But it is, I see the elements there. I think that it would be a huge improvement. One way that we could help soften the appeal, if you will, with the throw to Spanish would be to introduce proper landscaping. Some elements that were native to California could help. I'd like to see some, maybe some vantage on the pergola, maybe even wisteria, some sort of variety of flowers that's relatively hardy, easy to maintain, and maybe some palms. I mean, I'll leave it up to the designer to come up with that, but I think as it stands now, there was no presentation of any sort of landscape plan. What looks like is happening is maintaining the existing, which needs some help. It really does need quite a bit of attention, just to keep up with the building itself and this great design that we're going to see. But with all that said, I would be in support of this project.
Mr. Ruhl.
It's probably along the lines of a couple of other commissions have said, this is actually, these kinds of projects can be a little tough because we have rigorous Spanish colonial revival standards. We, you know, we like high-quality Spanish styles, but we also know that a building like this, you're not going to just turn that into a Spanish building or turn it into a Spanish colonial revival building. So these are sometimes kind of tough to get the right mix, and I think the architect has done a very good job of getting that right mix, kind of taking this building as far as it can go, and certainly making a big improvement over what it was. So I am in support of it. And I am grateful to the staff, too, for having the one-year review. I think that's a good idea in this particular case. I don't anticipate any issues, but it's good to take a look at it, and if nothing else, it's going to be an education for us. So thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Well, I would have never guessed that's meant to be a Spanish building. And I was surprised to hear that it's in an overlay where it's supposed to be. I don't think it's anywhere close to any kind of a Spanish design at all. With that said, though, I like the design of the building. It's in the neighborhood, and current building is really terrible, and I think this is quite attractive. But it's not Spanish. Come on, it is not Spanish.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggleston.
We reviewed this in Design Review. I'm very much in support of it. It's a tremendous improvement over the last design, and I just hope that they put a good restaurant or coffee shop in there, because right now, there's really nothing really there.
He takes some recommendations.
He's never missed a free meal.
So I'm very supportive of it.
Okay, great. If there is no more commissioner, commission discussion, then I'll entertain a motion and...
I will move that we adopt resolution number PC 16-003, a resolution of the planning commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving architectural permit 15-313, site plan permit 15-315, minor conditional use permit 15-481, Los Maris remodel, for a model of an existing office building and onsite shared parking located at 635 Camino de los Maris.
I have a motion.
And before a second, we didn't ask if anyone wanted to consider directing staff to follow through with the landscape architecture to see if it can be improved, not having it as a condition of approval, but give that...
Attachment five of your presentation this evening is a...
Let's make sure everybody's comfortable with that.
And it is consistent with California, with the requirements of the California. One thing I would say, though, is I think it was an interesting idea you had about some of the vines, Commissioner Blackwell, and I think that that's something we can just... I, you know, I've worked well and often with Mr. Graber, the architect. I'm pretty sure I can work with him to make sure, to see how we can incorporate that in. But you can, there is a number of agaves and native plants that they are, and they're redoing all the landscaping. So they're even, the existing is all coming out, and they're all being new with irrigation systems, new irrigation systems. It'll all be reviewed by Pat Murphy, our contract landscape architect. But I think, I really do think that's a great idea, Commissioner Blackwell. We can look at those vines.
With that said, I second.
Write the vines in right now, and I'll sign it.
Well, there's pigs' ears in here on the list, so I'm sure Eggleston's happy.
So with that said, I second it.
Okay, there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Aye, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item C. Item 216, Avenida Fabricante, number 107, conditional use permit 15-282, exclusive fitness. Mr. Adam Tamey is before us.
Thank you, Chair Brown. Good evening, planning commissioners. Adam Tamey, an associate planner. Tonight, I am presenting a conditional use permit for a recreational, commercial recreational use in the industrial park portion of the Ranch of Santa Fe, or excuse me, Ranch of San Clemente specific plan. You know, I said that once yesterday, and every time I've tried to say Ranch of San Clemente, it comes out Ranch of Santa Fe, so...
You've been VRBL.
I won't say it again tonight.
You've had some long days, I know.
Yeah. The project is located at 216 Avenida Fabricante, Suite 107. The property is known as the H Biz Center. This is a large property. It's approximately 5.2 acres, and it has six buildings on it. Those six buildings have 23 independent suites, and the entire site provides 189 parking spaces. This is somewhat unique situation in terms of how this, the individual suite's being utilized. So I'm going to throw out some square footages, and I apologize for reading them. The suite itself is approximately 4,500 square feet. It's two stories, and it has a 1,300-square-foot office on the upstairs, and it's got a 1,300 square-foot office on the downstairs with a 1,900-square-foot warehouse also on the first floor. The applicant is proposing to utilize just the downstairs, and it would be for a gym facility in the warehouse with their office in the office portion. The upstairs office would be utilized by a property management company that's currently using that portion of the suite. So there would technically be two companies in this suite, with the applicant being on the downstairs exclusively. The proposal itself, as I noted before, is a commercial recreation facility, and this is a, this is in the Ranch of San Clemente specific plan. This is how they refer to fitness facilities, and it covers group instruction as well. So the use being proposed is for group and personal fitness instruction. The group instruction would max out at 10 clients and two instructors at any given time. The classes would be offered Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. The group instruction would be towards the morning and the afternoon, with personal one-on-one instruction being provided between 1:00 and 4:00 daily. Low-level amplified sound is what is being proposed. And as far as the project and its consistency with the requirements of the city, the project does conform to the city's parking requirements. What we do in this situation is we identify how much parking is required for the suite itself. And in this case, we're having two uses. We have office upstairs, and we have commercial recreation downstairs. The commercial recreation is parked similar to group instruction uses, meaning it's based on occupancy. Since they're limited to 10 students and two instructors, that would give them, that would require seven spaces at any given time. The office is based on square footage, and that portion of it would round up to requiring five spaces. We require a parking analysis of all of the other suites in the center, and based on that, we figure out how much total parking is required and how much is provided. And once the calculations are done, we found that there is a surplus of eight parking spaces. There was, I incorrectly looked at a number on the parking analysis, and so the staff report says that there's a surplus of nine, but it's actually eight. In order to maintain this use as compatible with surrounding land uses, there are a number of conditions of approval that staff is proposing to place on this project. Most of these are consistent with conditions of approval that we've placed on other similar uses. They are, the first is that occupancy is limited to ensure that the use does not take up more parking than what they're requesting, which is what the center can sustain. There's two conditions, eight and 14, that together are specifying where the use is allowed to occur. And specifically, it's ensuring that the commercial recreation activities remain indoors. Also, that the office area of the downstairs is only for the office use of the fitness facility and not for office for somebody else over later. The classes are required to have a minimum 15-minute break, and if noise does become an issue, the applicant is required to mitigate that to the satisfaction of, or to the minimum necessary to alleviate the problem and to comply with the city's noise ordinance. With these conditions, staff is comfortable with this application and has found that it does meet the required findings for a conditional use permit. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is also available for a presentation.
Does the applicant care to address the commission on this issue at all, if you'd
Hello, good evening, commissioners. Debbie Drassler, representing the applicants, John and Regina Merwald. They've been in business for approximately seven years with a one-on-one training session, and they are eagerly excited to go ahead and get their operation moving forward. And if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer.
Okay. Commissioner Eggleston, you have a question?
Well, this was really a question for Adam, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, are there questions for the applicant? I guess Commissioner Eggleston has a question for you, Adam.
Adam, we received a letter indicating that perhaps that the, there was not proper notification given. Can you... Can you, can you address that?
I can. The letter was stating that, that a neighbor did not receive a, I'm trying to grab this here, was not mailed a notice, which is something we do, we send a notice to all properties, property owners within 300 feet. In order to get the list of this information, we require the applicant to provide a notification packet, and this generally involves contracting a service provider, somebody that has access to the latest property ownership information, and they certify that they have provided information that is accurate. In this case, we did receive that letter back, and it was missing a suite number from that information. I, I note, I spoke to the gentleman that did not receive that notice, and informed him that this is probably an indication that his property ownership information, either at the county level or at some other ownership database, is inaccurate, and it would probably benefit him to, to contact them specifically, but there was nothing that I could do about it. He also noted that he was not able to find the, the notice in any newspaper. We do have a, if I can find it, we do have an affidavit from the Sun Post News, which is where we notice pretty much all of our public notices, that says, I can't seem to find it now, well, I do have it. We have a, an affidavit that says it was circulated at least 10 days prior in a, in a newspaper that is identified as a locally circulated newspaper by the Superior Court of Orange County. The notices were also posted on the site, which is how this gentleman actually knew that this was happening, so, you know, in this case, one out of three was, you know, fortunate enough to catch, to, you know, to notice him. But we did all the noticing according to the requirements of the code.
Okay. Satisfy your question, Mr. Eggleston?
I don't know, but we'll continue.
Okay. Mr. Blackwell?
Two questions, Adam. Can you confirm the date that the property was posted?
Yeah, I personally posted it. It was, it was actually, I believe it was 12 days ahead of time. If you give me one second, I'll find this. Okay. It was December 23rd.
Mr. Blackwell in advance?
Yeah.
And the next question is, we received a letter from a resident stating that the applicant, it was his belief that the applicant is maintaining a trash can on the property that has been Would you or did you direct the concerned party to code enforcement or provide some sort of contact information for the proper party to take care of that?
You know, I have not had a chance yet. I got that note, that letter as well. It's actually not on their property, it's on the association's property, and I believe that the association is aware of it, and, you know, I'm, I'm sure that we can discuss getting rid of the trash can, but that's...
Is it, is it the applicant's responsibility, or is it the association's?
Well, it's the, if the applicant placed it there, then it would be their responsibility to remove it.
Okay. Thank you. I don't know if the applicant did that. Mr. Grant?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. We have used these parking standards on a number of projects similar to this in the past. Are you aware of any complaints or violations that have caused the applicant to change their operating parameters?
In previous?
Any previous applicants?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, the whole reason for the question was, I am not aware of any that have not, that have caused a problem with these parking standards.
As long as they comply with the occupancy, they're, they're generally, you know, we find that the parking is not an issue.
And the other one, I think we also did, received a letter from the HOA, is that correct?
Property management term.
It was the property manager, the property management sent an email.
Am I correct that to get their building permit, they've gotta get the HOA to sign off on it, correct?
That's, that's correct. However, I don't know that they need a building permit for anything.
They're not doing any interior modifications?
I don't believe they are.
No tenant improvements?
No, I think, I think most of their equipment is just, it does not require a building permit.
Okay, and then for the city attorney, does the posting have anything to do with how we proceed tonight?
Well, the matter has to be properly noticed, to make sure that you comply with due process. So, from what I'm hearing is that it was properly noticed, and so, there's no reason why you can't proceed this evening.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wu?
Yes, Adam, are you aware of any, it appears like there are a few complaints. Does the city code enforcement receive any complaint against this business in the last 12 months? If they did, how many complaints were there, and what's the outcome?
This business was in operation without a conditional use permit previously, and so this did start as a, as a code violation. It was one code violation, and the, you know, the citation basically, the warning basically said, get a conditional use permit. So they ceased operations and they came in once they realized that they needed a conditional use permit.
And what about other complaint about putting equipment on, on land that doesn't belong to them?
I, you know, I was not aware of that.
You know, I was up there today, and that, that picture that was provided, that, that land is like on the other side of the, of the animal shelter. I mean, it's like 400 feet away and off this, off the property. I was kind of amazed at that when I was up there this afternoon. You know, the chinning bars and the tires out there in the field. It's clear on the other, if you put that picture back up, it's on the, it's off their property and on the other side of the animal shelter. If you look at the, the suite site there, the property where the, the lot in question, where that picture was brought is, to the bottom of the picture, past the animal shelter, on the other side of the animal shelter, which isn't even posted, the sign there is just like no stopping sign on the road, so, doesn't even say no trespassing on that empty lot that's on the west side of it. That's where that, I don't know why the, why that photograph was provided to us, because it's certainly not pertinent to what we're trying to determine here tonight.
Yeah, and the project has been conditioned that all activities remain indoors, so, you know, I know that there have been some other uses where that was not made quite so clear, and so, at this point in time, staff is going another step to make sure that applicants are aware that...
So to clarify, they were actually operating there until code enforcement took action?
Yes, yes, they were. And so there was a, you know, staff has received a complaint. We've also received calls from the president of the association and the manager, the property manager, basically reiterating concerns, but not necessarily complaining about the use. And after discussing this with, you know, not only the complainants, but also nearby property owners that are okay with the, the use, staff is still supportive of this application.
Yes, a follow-up question. I, we received some photos of cars and vans and trucks that seem to be semi-parked, permanently parked in this location. Are these cars and vans of, from this particular use?
You know, I, I'm not sure. I've been out to the site three times, and I didn't notice cars that were permanently parked anywhere. I think the applicants could answer, you know, what vehicles are associated with their business.
All right, thank you.
So we'd like to call the applicant back up for your question there, Mr. Eggleston?
Yes.
So some issues on the cars that are parked there, I don't know, we had to see, email with...
The cars that are there have nothing to do with the applicant and the, the illegal operation. They were operating legally in a next-door suite, and they moved over to this suite, not realizing they needed to get another CUP for their operation, and that's why they were not meeting code.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Mr. Ruen?
Yeah, question for, for Adam. Regarding the parking, we got some communicate, some various communications about the parking. I just wanted to clarify, this is, this is a private parking area, so any issues with the parking in terms of people parking there permanently when they shouldn't, or, or misuse of the parking, that, is that, are those complaints and, and enforcement handled by the HOA and the property management, or does the city have any responsibility in that area?
The HOA does, however, the, the newness of this center means that in their original approvals, the city was, one of the conditions of approval was that the city had the right, but not the obligation, to enforce any CCNRs. There are times where there's a long-term storage of vehicles in the business park, and the city has taken some enforcement action to, to do, to take care of that. We, we do have a vested interest in making sure that these centers remain clean and attractive to businesses and clients.
So, so assuming their CCNRs say no permanent parking, we have the, the option to come in and do something about it?
Excuse us, thank you very much, hold off on it, or submit a card for speaking.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not aware of prohibitions against long-term parking in the, in the parking lot.
Then there's local property management there that should be taking action also, I suppose.
Yes, yeah, this, I mean, generally, these are self-policing centers that would take care of this.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff or the applicant? With that, we'll open up the public hearing. We do have one card tonight from Karen Retzger Gallagher?
Sorry.
Greitner?
Hi, my name is Karen Gardner, thank you very much commissioners for letting me speak. I just want to start by saying, again, we are the business owners, we own the unit right immediately next door, Suite 108, next door to 107. We just want to make sure and make it clear, we're not opposed to having a gym there or a business, we're very supportive of businesses and so on. We just wanted to make sure that what is, businesses that are there, that things are run properly and, and do not have a negative impact on neighbors and so on and so forth. We are the ones that sent in the letter that you see with, I can answer to some of the questions that you had regarding parking and so on and so forth. With the notification, granted, yeah, it sounds like, you know, obviously, they have two weeks, you know, notification, but coincidentally, it's also the holidays, and you guys are gone, and some of our businesses are gone, and so, you know, it's just, it's nice that you have three modes of communication, so we were able to get wind of this by at least posting the sign, so that's nice. But my concern is, is that the rest of the neighbors and our association, management company, and the board didn't have adequate time to really put together anything constructive to present to you, so it's kind of like rushing things in. So, we kind of feel that that's a little kind of, it makes us uncomfortable. But anyway, in regards to the business, we, we have met Regina and John, think they're wonderful, and I think having a gym is great, but there are some concerns we wanted to have addressed and ensure that whatever's going on is, is appropriate. They did operate in 106 in the warehouse and 106 previous. I think, if I'm not mistaken, John, they previously owned that building and they went and sold it, and now they are going to be renting out the first floor of 107. Vehicles that are semi-parked there permanently are not theirs, they're actually the owners of that unit that operate their business on the top floor. Parking is something that is an association thing that we're dealing with. We do have business owners in there, it is private property, it should be HOA and, you know, managing it. We've had problems in the past with parking. I guess the building's been there since one, 2007, I think, and so, some of the business owners have decided, you know what, to alleviate some of the pressure, they went ahead and made sure that they at least have some designated parking for each of the units. For example, ours 106, we have three sites that are specifically exclusively for us, and it has our number on it. And I think 107 has four of them. So when you talk about the parking thing there, it's kind of a little iffy, it's kind of a give and take, but, you know, when you have other businesses who are utilizing that space, it kind of takes away from the free open space. Right now, currently, there's no major pressure for parking, but as time goes on and more of the businesses become fully utilized, there's gonna be some issues. And I guess that's something we'll have to deal with in the HOA, and then maybe the city can help support us in that, to that end. So, it's not a real big issue for us right now, we just want to draw that to your attention. Oh, oh, I'm rushing, I'm running out of time.
Thank you. You are out of time.
Okay, well, I just wanted to say that I want to make sure that the equipment there, that's something that they put there themselves, so, and I don't have a problem with that, as long as they have permission to use it and whatever. In the past, when they operated 106, they, they were operating outside of their business, and they did put paint on the driveways and the pathways nearby, so, I have no problem as long as they make sure and say, and we'd like to make sure that they loitering is minimized and true, and so on. So, thank you very much.
Excuse me, I did, I did have a question.
Okay, you have a question.
From the speaker, ma'am?
You've got a little more time.
Quick question for you. The, you mentioned some, some concerns. Were there any, I don't know if you've looked at the staff report, there's a list of conditions of approval. Did you have any changes or additions to that that you thought would be necessary for the good operation of the other businesses?
No, I, I did like the condition to make sure that the operation's maintained within the, in the site. Our concern was with the trash can, we don't have a problem with the trash can being there, I just like to make sure it's maintained. So if they do have, people have breaks and whatnot, obviously, they're gonna probably want to break outside perhaps, and have maybe, some of their clients in the past have been smokers, and so that's kind of, we're concerned about secondhand smoke and things like that, so, I don't know if that's something possible to, to limit smoking, or make sure that the smoking is at a place that's far enough away, and, and they pick up, you know, maintain their property, that they're leasing, that sort of thing. But other than that, we didn't have any problems with it that I can think of. Can you think of anything, Joe?
All in the letter.
Yeah, it's all in the letter, so it's pretty much there, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other, anybody else fill out a card or wish to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and entertain discussion. And here's Madam Secretary.
Well, I certainly have some concerns with, with this, with this, a number of issues. The only way I'm gonna be supportive of this is if there's a review after six months, because I think there's been enough issues raised at this point to, to have some concern, so...
Okay. Mr. Ruen?
Yeah, I, I guess, I don't have a problem with a six-month review. I, I see some issues that are association-related, and we need to, want to be careful with that, we want to respect the association, I think, and at the same time, you know, make sure that the city's needs are taken care of. I see with the parking, you know, that works, we've got this conditioned as we normally condition this type of business. I guess my only, then my only concern would be the, the trash can issue. I guess I have to ask, if they have to take care of all their business inside, is, is people gathering around the trash can and smoking, is that part of their business? I'm, I'm actually not sure.
That was 100 feet away.
But, yeah, if it's, if they do it to support their business, then it would seem to be part of their business. But again, I, I tend to think that's more of a homeowners association, excuse me, the association issue there, so, you know, in that case, I kinda have to go with approval of the CUP.
Can you comment? Yeah, the fact that the applicant was operating previously in an adjacent space, and I don't hear that there were any comments or complaints of parking issues at that time, he's not changing, I don't believe, the size of the facility or the size, he did not have these restrictions we're putting on him. And it looks like... And it looks like you could probably go in with a project into the same space that did not require our approval, that could require 12 spaces also, which we would have no control over. So I think I can make the findings and the fact that there is a bit of a track record that they've set already for the property. And I agree that I think this is a property management issue as far as the parking and these other issues, so they don't really fall into something that I would think we need to consider unless there was a true problem existing, so I'm in favor of the project. I noticed we did get this letter from the HOA manager, I guess, instead the board directed, and we, they came in with their amendments to their CCNRs with the parking and all that, and, but it looks to me like maybe the, maybe the property manager and the board now will be a little more active with their tenants and maybe these other neighbors now can take their, their, their problems to the property manager, he could probably do what he's required to do. And although I am concerned if this outdoor gym thing is 600 feet away, is out in the middle of this field, that hopefully they have permission for that or whatever was out there, but other than that, I'd be supportive of it. But there are other commissioners have comments, Mr. Wu?
In general, I support this project. There are some concerns and complaints about it, but they seem to be addressed well by the conditions of this approval. I do agree with Commissioner Eggleston's recommendation to have a review. If not in six months, then maybe in 12 months, just to make sure the business is operating according to those conditions.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I can make the findings for conditional use permit, and I think the other issues are housekeeping issues for the management company up there, so I'm fully supportive of this.
I also agree with Commissioner Eggleston, we ought to have a review, six months probably appropriate after commencement of business operations, I guess is the proper way to word it. And so to make sure that everybody's good neighbors and then, and hopefully the property management and then the board of directors out there will be a little more active with some of their issues. With that, a motion? I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve Resolution Number PC 16001, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving conditional use permit, 15282, exclusive fitness, a request to allow commercial recreation use with group instruction of fitness classes in an individual building located at 216 Avenida Fabricante, Suite 107, with the condition that the project is reviewed after one year for parking compliance.
And it's, it's an industrial building, not an institution.
Okay, industrial building, that's fine.
Do you understand the compliance for the conditions?
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that was the intent, that was the intent.
Shall we have a straw vote on six months or one year?
I prefer six months.
Have a straw vote, all in favor of six months, raise your hand. This is after commencement of business operation.
Right.
It doesn't matter, right? Two, three, four, opposed, one year, who wants me? Two for one year and four for, wait a minute, you voted twice. Either one's fine.
So it's six months, a straw vote?
So for a review- Buy you books and send you to school for five years, Ruhl. With a review of the condition, conditions of approval in six months. Okay. I have a motion with a, I have a motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 7-0. Good luck. And with that, we have new business tonight, a perfect bookend to a wonderful rainy evening here, we started with our traffic engineer, we're going to finish with our traffic engineer, I guess.
Great. Hi, I'm Tom Frank, your Transportation Engineering Manager, and it's with pleasure that I get to present the conceptual designs for the Camino del Rio Intersection Improvements, which is a funded capital improvement project. Before I get going, I wanted to introduce Michael Wallwork. He's a key, key member of our design team on the project, and not only is his main responsibility for this project is his expertise in helping design the intersection improvements, he's also a nationally recognized expert in the roundabout designs, he's also a contributing author to the model design, or the Model Design Manual of Living Streets, which is referenced in our general plan. So he's, just a pleasure to have on our team and I'm grateful to be working with him.
Well, you loaded your guns for this proposal, didn't you?
Yeah. So just an overview on why do we even have this project? Well, basically, it's to provide improvements to manage the traffic and balance the needs of the intersection when Camino del Rio is opened all the way through to La Pata, basically filling in that gap. And as we know, the La Pata project is well underway, it's probably about 90% constructed within the city limits, and when it's opened, the ADT is expected to be 4,000, going to 6,000 ADT, and then ultimately, it's projected to go up to 8,000 ADT. We show in the blue perimeter the limits of this project, the green dots are the actual intersection improvements, which we'll be focusing on tonight. The blue limits are what are proposed to be the limits of lane reconfigurations along that segment. Starting to get your bearings, if you can see the graphics, Camino de los Morris, about 600 feet south towards the freeway direction, we're proposing to neck down from the current four-lane configuration to a two-lane configuration on the approach to one of the proposed intersections, and as you'll see further in the presentation, the recommendation or the preferred alternatives to go with a roundabout at that location. The road alignment would then continue in a three-lane configuration through the second roundabout at Cerro Mentoso and then go up beyond the end of the development of that Forrester Ranch area. At that point, then, it would then transition back to two lanes going up the slope and tying in with Avenida La Pata. So we can get further into the actual lane alignments when we go into the presentation. This particular project, the funding is for the improvements of those two intersections. We also have a separate capital improvement project, which would, which would provide for an overlay from Camino de los Morris to the end of the existing pavement.
This is the normal street calming line item and the capital, the standard one, or you have a special one for it?
It's just a standard for resurfacing the roadway.
Okay.
So the process we've been following to evaluate the proper intersection control for these two intersections is, is a series of workshops, we're here tonight, and then following this public hearing, we'll then refine the design drawings and go to city council in February of the next month, and then following that, we'll prepare final design drawings in the spring of this year and hope to be under construction in the summer of this year. The anticipated opening of Avenida La Pata is the fall of 2016. The gap closure for Camino del Rio is lagging slightly, they're anticipating starting that project in April. They haven't given us an end date, but it looks like it might be right around the same time, so we really want to get underway with the construction of these intersection improvements to prepare for the oncoming traffic.
They're still working on some title issues and all that, has that been resolved with the property up there?
It's close, the easement issues are close to being resolved, so we're, the county's moving forward with the construction of the gap closure.
Okay.
So first, we had held workshop number one, and we basically, it was a vision workshop, trying to get what's important to the residents in the area and the community, and we gave out questionnaires and, and here's the results. Overwhelmingly, the most important thing was noise, you can see basically the results in front of you, followed by speed, property values, bike infrastructure, and then going down the list. We asked them without, you know, going through the different advantages and disadvantages of the alternative types of intersections, we asked them what types of improvements they feel were worth considering, and by far, they felt that the roundabouts by 76% were favored over other types of intersection control. They also, 23% were in favor of reducing lanes or road diets, and then you can see the remainder of their support for the different items listed. The consulting teams, Stan Tech, then tied performance measures to what the community felt was important for the community, associated with the road needs, and from that, they then provided the rankings for the different alternatives. And as you can see, the, the roundabout alternative came out at 92.5, the traffic signal at 48, and the no build alternative at 31.
Tom, I noticed one of those points was speed you had up there.
Yeah.
Is that a reduction in speed or an increase in speed?
It's a reduction in speed.
Okay, thanks.
So in workshop number two, we've, we've provided feedback on what we learned in the vision workshop number one, and we then provided a questionnaire again to the residents, and a majority preferred roundabouts at both the intersections, and then also at that workshop, a majority preferred road diet on Camino del Rio to reduce the number from currently four-lane planned to two lanes along that segment in which I described earlier. Here's the summary of the questionnaires, which we handed out, 21 out of 23 strongly agreed that, that Camino de los Morris intersection should be a roundabout, and then 19 of 21 suggested either strongly agreed or agreed that Calle Cerro Mentoso should also be a roundabout. Of course, there is one other that felt it should be a signal, and then one response identified an always stop. Just wanted to point out that that intersection does not warrant an always stop, so we didn't pursue that further. So here's the specific 30% design concepts, which we'll be talking about tonight. I'll give you, try, first off, I'll give you, try and get your bearings on, on the concept in front of you. Looks like most of you are, I guess, looking at a monitor. So towards your right is Camino-
I think this is St.
-del Rio, which is going up towards Cerro Mentoso. Actually, I guess I should start off with hopefully this is north there, it's pretty hard to see, but north is straight up and down, and on Camino de los Morris, that's the one that's going from the bottom of the page towards the top of the page, and that's going towards the end of Camino de los Morris, so towards the landfill or towards the open space. So going down would then be going towards the ocean or the freeway, and then Bonanza is the residential collector street towards the west. So what you're looking at is, the tannish, yellowish color is landscaped areas, which would be implemented, which don't exist today. It's kind of hard to see, but you can see behind those landscaped areas, you can, hopefully you can see the existing curb line, yeah, right around there, exactly, and that's an existing access ramp and sidewalk. And then when you go to the center of the intersection, you can see the proposed perimeter of the, of the roundabout, and that's actually the outside of the truck apron, and inside of that, you'd see a landscaped area, exactly right there, that yellow on the inside. And the reason why we, we didn't color the landscaped areas green is because we know we're in a drought and we didn't want to portray that we're planting grass, so I know yellow may not be the best color to show for landscaped areas, but it is actually landscaped areas we're talking about.
Happy New Year, Mr. Frank.
So on the landscaped areas, the areas in yellow, the areas on the outside of the street, which are adjacent to the neighborhoods, our thought is we're trying, we coordinate with the adjacent HOAs and we'd ask if they would assume maintenance responsibilities associated with those areas. And the real goal is just to get that landscaped area to be in context and coordinated with their adjacent landscaped common areas. The areas, we'll go further into more details about landscaping, a little bit further in presentation, but the areas inside of the curb lines, those would likely be maintained by the city, and our, our goal in those areas is to provide a low-maintenance style landscaping, but also attractive and complement the area's context and improve the aesthetics of the area. The darker, I guess, the black type of lines which are in the center of the street, those are called splitter islands, and our thought on that is we would go with a Zeriscape style of landscaping, low maintenance, attractive but low maintenance would be, and I'll go into more, a little bit more detail on that a little bit later. And, and then also on this slide, we show the proposed lane alignments, and I think, I know it's too small for you to read, but if you look on the Camino del Rio portion going towards Cerro Mentoso, I can kind of walk you through what that lane alignment is, what we're proposing as the lane alignment. On the very far, starting from the bottom and then working upwards, so we're starting at the southerly curb line of Camino del Rio. So from the curb line, we're proposing an eight-foot bike lane, then an eight-foot buffer, and then inside the buffer, we'd have an 11-foot travel lane, and then a 10-foot area for turn lane, a left turn lane, more median area, and then above that, a travel lane in the other direction of 11-foot reciprocal, eight-foot buffer, and then another eight-foot bike lane. So that would be a reduction from the, the current five-lane configuration to a three-lane configuration.
The bike lanes will all tie in around this-
Right.
Around the circular, so that they're safe going around the-
They will, and what, and what my plan is, once I complete my brief presentation or my presentation, Michael is available to answer any specific questions you have regarding the, the operation and, and particular comments or questions you have on, on roundabouts and their operation. But yeah, we, we definitely address the transition from bike lanes to the roundabout. Trying to think if there's anything else which I need to address at this point, okay.
I have another question.
Sure.
What is it, what are the shapes of landscaped areas that I like?
Oh, that's a good question. That's for turning radiuses of different-sized vehicles, so we want to make sure that we can accommodate the, the turning movements for, for different-sized trucks, so.
You're anticipating like a, a full-size truck needing that by coming down-
Absolutely, yeah.
-Camino Rio off of La Pata-
Right.
And then making that left turn there to go down to-
And this is for the 65-foot-
65-foot trailer, that's why it's got that shape.
Yeah, the lark, exactly.
For that left turn?
Right. So that was for the Camino de los Morris intersection, and here is the proposed design for the Calle Cerro Mentoso intersection, and I guess it's a similar type of graphics and legends, so the, the yellowish tan areas is landscaped areas, and the darker, black checkered area is a Zeriscape cobal succulent-style landscaping, which we're proposing. And then, actually, I didn't cover it, but the reddish area in the roundabout in the center, that's the truck apron, and so that would be either a stamped concrete or, or some sort of a brick or some, or even a concrete apron, basically, that the trucks, for the larger vehicles that, that need that space, they can actually roll up on a three-inch curb and use that space for their back wheels to turn around. So I just wanted to point out the benefits of roundabouts over other intersection control, and the roundabouts are superior for improving safety for all users, they're more efficient for all the users, safer for pedestrians and bicyclists, they, they slow speeds or calm traffic through the intersection, but they don't, they actually improve travel speeds through the entire corridor, because you're not waiting at red lights. They have community context benefits, as I mentioned, they, they calm traffic through the particular intersections, they enhance the environment and aesthetics, they, they have noise reduction qualities, because they reduce the speed of cars, and the, the car tires are one of the greatest contributors to car or vehicle pollution, noise pollution. They also have a reduction in vehicle emissions and fuel consumption, and overall, they have a lower operation and maintenance costs and traffic signals by about $10,000 annual savings per intersection. The landscape design is really important, landscaping is a very important element of the, of the, of the roundabout designs. It's important to provide long-range visibility. In our landscaping plans, the center area will be mounded to provide increased visibility, there'll be some form of a vertical element, and it's important to also keep a clear- There'll be some form of a vertical element, and it's important to also keep a clear zone from the truck apron to make sure that it's safe for vehicles traveling the roadway. And then our particular plan, I covered most of these elements, but the outer areas outside of the outside curb line, we're proposing to coordinate with the adjacent HOAs to make sure we're well-coordinated with their landscape palette. Inside of the street, curb-to-curb area and the center line or the roundabout area, we're proposing to put a large tree, or a tree that will grow into a large tree, in the center roundabout. And outside of that, we have Zeriscap-style, low-maintenance landscaping, and it would be similar to what we're proposing on the El Camino Real Class 1 project with a lot of rock and grass and succulents and maybe a few boulders. And that's also the similar type of landscaping which we'd be proposing along any medians that were added in that roadway. So here's a picture of a roundabout in Ladera Ranch, and what I really wanted to point out is that they have a great vertical element with that large tree. And then their landscaping, we probably have something a little bit different, a little more Zeriscap, low-maintenance style. They actually have, you know, grass perimeters around there. We wouldn't want that because we don't want to have people having to go out there frequently. Here's what we're proposing for the landscaping on the El Camino Real Class 1 project, which we're currently working to get out the bid. That's more of the succulent grass and cobble and boulder-style landscaping which we'd likely be proposing on this project. There is actually a landscape architect on the design team who will be coming up with the final improvement plans, landscaped improvement plans for the project. And then here's an example of some Zeriscap, similar type of landscaping we've installed at some bulbout locations throughout town. This one's on Savell Street, I believe.
That's known by Los Palmas.
So with that, we're, here's the recommendations. We're recommending that you bring forward a recommendation to City Council for the approval of conceptual designs for roundabouts at Camino de los Moros and Cae Saramatoso. And in addition, we recommend that you forward to City Council a recommendation for restriping Camino del Rio from a four-lane to a two-lane roadway with a center turn lane from Camino de los Moros to 500 feet east of Cae Precipio or something like that.
I'm very, I'm personally very, very?
I could spell it for you, but I can't say it.
Okay. I'm very heartened by this whole project and your outreach.
Does it? No, I don't, does it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Your staff report sits in, in your consultant said a new standard, what we'll expect in the future for similar traffic projects with all the public outreach, and it's really great. I think, instead of new standard anyway, that our expectations will hopefully be met in the future with something similar like this. You've done a good job with it. Before we entertain, do you have questions of Tom right now, or we'd like to get the consultant up here for a few words?
I have some questions of Tom.
Okay, starting to the right to left.
Tom, I'm an advocate of roundabouts where appropriate. I grew up in a historic town in Ohio that had a roundabout with eight roads coming into it, so I'm very familiar with roundabouts. But, Tom, for the life of me, I'm just so befuddled when it comes to, when I hear the word "traffic calming," I shudder. And I shudder because this is going to be a major traffic street with La Pata. Major. There's going to be lots of cars coming through here. Right now, it's deserted for cars, but when La Pata goes through, this is going to be a huge, huge area for traffic. And so I'm befuddled why we always use the word "traffic calming," and we try to reduce lanes from four to two where we have all this increase in traffic coming in. Could you enlighten me?
Okay, I will do my best. So maybe we should not use the term "traffic calming," maybe we should use the term "traffic management." And what we're trying to do is to design a road segment for the most appropriate use for all of the users of the roadway. Now, with that said, I recognize 98% or greater of the users of the roadway are vehicles, especially on this roadway. So our primary focus is to balance the users of the roadway. 98% of that means we need to have a very well-functioning roadway for vehicles. With that said, what the residents and what the community does not want is for vehicles to be speeding at an extraordinarily high rate of speed on our collector's streets. One of the greatest complaints I receive, not only on residential streets but on collectors and arterials, is the speed complaints. People are saying, "People are flying down Camino de los Moros. People are flying down Vaquero. Somebody's going to get killed." Every, of course, every time I get a complaint, that's the first thing people say, is "Somebody's going to get killed." So what we're trying to do is to provide a roadway design that's appropriate for a collector road going through a developed community. So that's our goal. With that said, there are also additional users. There's pedestrians in this area, particularly pedestrians from the developed area, which are going to be crossing or walking along Camino, or Camino de los Moros and Del Rio, and then crossing Del Rio on Saramatoso to go to the middle school and to the elementary school. So we definitely need to accommodate the pedestrian use of that area. In addition, there are the occasional bicyclists in the area which will be using this roadway. And on that note, the bicyclist, there's two types or maybe even more than that, but there's a range of different bicycle levels that we're looking at, bicyclist levels. There's obviously the experienced exercise and the vehicularist style of bicyclists which ride with traffic. There's also, in this case, there's going to be a larger segment of schoolchildren which may choose to ride their bikes to school. So maybe we shouldn't be using the word "traffic calming" through this intersection. Maybe we should be using the word "providing the best road design for this road segment and these intersections."
Well, I guess you can call it what you want, but to me, when you have a roundabout and you have pedestrians crossing, I travel through Ladera Ranch in my business at least once a week.
Okay, so you're very familiar with?
Very familiar with the roundabouts in Ladera Ranch. And I'm very familiar with people crossing with a roundabout. And when you're in a roundabout and you're coming around and you're going into another street, and you have to slow down for a pedestrian who's crossing, you're backing up traffic behind you to the point where sometimes it's nearly an accident waiting to happen where the car is trying to bump into your rear. So, you know, I don't mind it when a pedestrian crossing is there for limited pedestrian traffic. Though I have to tell you, when I see pedestrian traffic in a roundabout with heavy pedestrian traffic, I'm very concerned about that because you've got cars coming around and going around very quickly, and you've got pedestrians crossing at the same time, and it's an accident waiting to happen. It really is. So we've got 14,000 homes that are going in around this area.
Right.
And for, and this is going to become a major street for people getting off the La Pata and getting on La Pata. And I'm just concerned about taking it down from four to two lanes.
A couple of comments on that is, the volume of traffic which is projected is equivalent to what we're seeing on like Avenue to Vaquero and Presidio going up, actually over the hill and connecting between Avenue to Pico and towards the downtown area. So that's the level of traffic which we're anticipating. That's between 6,000 to 8,000, so that's what's projected. Now, with that said, when I-5 is backed up, you may see peak periods where this road segment does peak that. And so I just want to, you know, disclaimer on that, saying, "Hey, Tom, I thought it was supposed to be 8,000." There may be times when it's higher than that.
It's normal flow.
But, yeah, it's normal flow. It's what's planned and projected. Additionally, regarding the pedestrians, what a majority of the community has what have roundabouts have found is that it's much better for the pedestrians, and it's a much more efficient intersection control for the vehicles and the pedestrians. So I actually live near one, and I travel through one four times a day and with my younger children, and I travel through it obviously four times a day in my car, and it's a much more efficient style of intersection control. And you have to wait much less shorter times in a roundabout versus a signal in the appropriate location. And what happens is there's a lot of uncertainty which people have when they approach a roundabout. Some people aren't quite sure what they should do. Their first reaction is to slow down, and then what I've noticed, and I think what happens, is people then make eye contact. If there's pedestrian there, the drivers will actually make eye contact and then stop, and then hopefully the pedestrian doesn't jump out in front of a car before they see that they're starting to slow down. The people that then, if, the people behind them, they have to stop whether it's a roundabout or a red light. Otherwise, they're going to rear-end somebody and they're going to be at fault. So I think?
What I have seen in Ladera Ranch, because one of them is a school crossing. Okay, when that, when that school crossing guard comes out, puts a stop sign there, and you've got kids crossing, you've got people backed up in that roundabout. So it's not always the most efficient manner for pedestrians, so.
Okay.
Thank you. I would like to point out before I initiate it, as I look at the drawings here, A, the crossing on the maps, the way they preliminary designed it, the crossing, the crosswalks have been set back from the roundabout, A, and you've got, with the traffic bulbouts there, calming issues going on, you've narrowed the crosswalk so that the passenger exposure time in the street has been reduced, so in the case of, I think, a pretty good roundabout design. I think the Ladera Ranch picture, you'll see the crosswalk's closer to the roundabout, but these are, look to me, there's no scale from the, from the center of the roundabout for say to the nearest crosswalk, but they look like they're 40 or 50, 60, 70 feet offset. I'm not sure.
Now, I'll have Michael actually address that issue.
But I think you've, I think accommodated some of those concerns by the design, but anyway, with that, Mr. Blackwell, you have a question?
Yes, I have one primary with four subs.
Okay.
I'll go quick.
Mr. Eggleston had a lot of long time, a lot of time, too. He got equal time.
Thirty minutes. Okay, so just to confirm that at both of these, these project areas, there'd be significant alterations to the curb and sidewalks?
Correct.
Okay. And can you tell me, the base, I'll assume it's an 8,000 average ADT?
Mm-hmm.
Just for giggles. How does that compare to Veracruz and say Vista Hermosa? What are the, what's the ADT now that we've seen it?
So Vista Hermosa, I believe, is in the order of 20.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, maybe higher than that towards the freeway. It obviously gets higher ADTs as you get closer to I-5. I think we're at about 40 on Avenue to Pico, and you said Veracruz, I think we're closer to 10 on Avenue to Veracruz.
Okay, so Veracruz and Camino del Rio are going to be close.
Close, but that's the projected for 20 years out. They're saying initially it should be about six, six or seven or so.
Well, that's what we was wanting to anticipate.
Right, yeah.
Based on growth.
But it'd be similar traffic flows for, and I also wanted to highlight or explain that road capacity is really limited by the intersections. So a road segment, a single lane could handle well over 20,000 vehicles per day. Personally, and I think, I'm just sensing, or I guess I'm assuming that the community wouldn't want 20,000 vehicles per day going through this, that one lane of traffic can accommodate 20,000 vehicles, or two, I should say two lanes of traffic.
Just moving.
Two lanes, yeah, two-lane roadway can accommodate 20,000 vehicles. It's the actual intersection control that really limits the capacity of the roadway. So we could leave it a four-lane roadway. We could put in signals, but a two, what we're proposing can accommodate the capacity, and I think it better addresses all of the users' needs of that roadway.
Okay. So this one, Camino del Rio is currently considered a secondary corridor, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Once it connects, or what, but yet, why don't you, can you just, for all of us, differentiate between a primary corridor and a secondary corridor?
Yeah, it's actually a definition that's provided by Orange County Transit Authority, and it's a part of their master plan of arterial highways. And a primary arterial is six, or it's three lanes in each direction, a six-lane roadway with, there's a divided or an undivided definition, but in most cases, it's a divided highway.
So even at build-out?
So it's a primary.
So even at build-out, this would not change the designation for this road? Still going to maintain?
That's correct.
Be maintained as a secondary corridor?
That's right.
Okay. 64 feet wide? Okay.
And I also wanted to point out additionally, where we're beyond, or I guess it'd be east of Saramatoso, we are proposing beyond a developed area to transition to two lanes going up towards Avenue La Pata. And the purpose of that transition is to provide a passing lane where there's no adjacent development, because one of this, one of the issues we're concerned about is the noise level. Once you have that transition from one lane to two lanes going up the hill, people are going to hit the accelerator, and there's going to be the associated noise with them accelerating up that hill. But considering there's no adjacent development, we think it's appropriate to keep that configuration.
I think it was one of your options, wasn't it?
That was one of our options, yeah. We could actually transition to two lanes going eastbound beyond?
325 feet east of Saramatoso.
Right, 325 feet.
That's an option, but you don't, you're not?
We're not recommending.
You're not recommending, you're not, you didn't say, "Tell us to recommend that" as far as the traffic?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, you hit my last question, and I'll just move straight ahead. This might be a question better answered by the consultant, but he can take a stab at it. And it's regarding the intent. And what we're doing here is we're trying to, you know, put in some mitigation measures here. We're anticipating lots of traffic. We know it's going to happen.
Right.
It's going to connect. Queen is right on. It's going to, it's going to, it's going to really be a thoroughfare, really. So the intent here, based on the surveys that were taken over two meetings, noise and speed are the two primary concerns. Those are the big ones. Big spike in percentage of concern there. So my question here is, couldn't we address those concerns without spending all the money on the improvements with just striping, signaling, and signage versus the roundabouts? Can we achieve the same effect? Aesthetics aside, it's going to be beautiful, no doubt about it. But just functionality-wise, I mean, can we get there with striping, signage?
I don't believe so, no.
And why not?
The signals don't provide traffic calming, and the striping, we could possibly slow the speed slightly by doing the road diet, but we then have to accommodate the capacity of the roadway at the intersections, so we'd likely have to go to, back to a four-lane configuration at the intersections. If you go with the signalized alternative, what you typically get, or what you get, and you can experience this in your everyday driving through the signals which we have in town, is people will, if you get a green light, it's great, you continue on, and it would go to a four-lane configuration. You have to merge back to a two-lane to appreciate the traffic management style, to keep speeds at a reasonable speed. But when you're stopped, people are waiting, waiting, waiting about a minute to two minutes. When it's green, then they'll accelerate, and what you find with traffic signal road segments is you'll find a large synoidal style of vehicular speeds. When it stops, once you get a green, the people speed up, and then, you know, then they hit another red, they'll stop again, then they'll speed up. And then with roundabouts, you can go through a roundabout around, it depends on the design, but anywhere between like 15 to 20 miles an hour. So people will be, they won't be stopped, they'll be going through the intersection about 20. They might go up to 30, 35, and then they'll go back to 20. So it's not quite of an abrupt synoidal vehicular speed, it's more fluid. So I'm not aware of how you could really manage speeds with just striping and signals. I think you really need the roundabouts to accommodate the speeds through the intersection and actually address all the users, too. But just focused on vehicles, I'm still not aware of how you could manage speeds with just striping and signals.
Well, I guess what?
Do you want to add to this?
Well, just to supplement that, and feel free to come on up. I guess what I was envisioning was what we see commonly, and that's maybe a flashing yellow light, some warning signs, a stop sign?
I'll cover that.
In a crosswalk.
And actually, why don't you, because they hear it from me all the time, so let's hear it from an expert here. Okay.
Well, I've been a traffic engineer for almost 40 years, and I originally started in Australia. So I... So, I talk a little bit funny, and.
We haven't spoken English in this country for 200 years ourselves, so don't worry.
In Australia, you know, I helped design the first roundabout, it was about 37 years ago, and I helped with the development of traffic calming, right? So, we learned by trial and error what worked and what didn't work, okay? And one of the things we learned as far as traffic calming goes is, concrete is the only thing that really calms traffic, that modifies driver behavior. And the question when you're doing, you have to do a traffic calming project, is, where is the concrete gonna go, and in what shape will that concrete take? That's the only question you have when you do it properly. We tried, you know, signs, and I've worked, done, oh gosh, over 100 traffic calming projects in the U.S. alone. And, you know, people have put up flashing yellow signs, they've put up the radar signs like you have on one of the roads here, they've put up, you know, slow down children here, slow down, you know, blind children here, there. Golden, Colorado, did it once a few years ago, did an after survey, found the speeds went up when the, after the signs went in, right? And the same with the, the radar telling you how fast you were going. Golden did that also, and they did studies, and they found out that for the first week or two, it has an impact, but then everyone gets used to it. And so, you go back a couple of weeks after your initial study, and you'll find out the speeds are back to what they were, or even higher. And, and to make that work, what you have to do is actually have someone in the community group going down, knocking on the door, whoever went through that sign fast, and reminding them that they went too fast for that neighborhood, which is very time-consuming, okay? Encinitas had police enforcement, okay? That works when the policeman's there. Same on my street in, in Florida, you know, when the policeman's around, people stop at the stop signs, they go slow. When the policeman's not there, they go faster, right? And so, so with traffic calming, as per se, in neighborhoods, and that, it's concrete, right? And what form, what shape does that, you know, take? And that's why when we go onto, collect the roads and do traffic calming, roundabouts, and same on arterial roads, the only way you can calm traffic on an arterial road is with a roundabout. There is absolutely nothing else works. Collect the roads, you can use roundabouts, you can use speed tables, you can use horizontal deflection device and so forth, but it has to be concrete to slow traffic, you know, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. All the other things are variable in their effectiveness, right? And most of them don't, don't work very well after a few days. So, that's why the roundabout.
Mr. Rule.
Thanks, and actually, a lot of, what I was wondering has been covered by, by your question, so I appreciate them. One thing I wanted to ask was, it looks like the widest, if I'm looking at a pedestrian crossing this, it looks like 23 feet is the maximum length that someone would be crossing the road. About how long does that take for someone to do that?
Well, the typical speed nowadays for elderly citizens is 3.5 feet per second, so it takes you roughly eight seconds to cross that.
Eight seconds to cross that intersection?
Yeah, that's for an elderly person, you know, you could do it a lot quicker.
Okay. And I'm just thinking, and by the way, the baseline of the Caro, that, that gives me a much better idea of what that's gonna look like, so I appreciate that. It makes, it certainly makes more sense to me. So, the, the action here is, there's no lights, people are taking anywhere from, say, four to eight seconds, depending on how they walk, to cross that one lane of traffic to get across. And historically, since there are no signage and everything, I, I like this philosophically, I like this, it kind of matches my experience with, with software usability, but the, I wanna make sure that, you know, what, what do we have in terms of historical safety measures on how this works versus if you have a stoplight and someone is crossing at a walk signal, that sort of thing, as opposed to, you know, looking out there and having a shorter space to cross?
Okay. The biggest study ever on traffic signals versus roundabouts was done in Melbourne, Australia, and they compared 2,500 signalized intersections, little ones and big ones, with some, I think it was like 4,400 roundabouts, over a five-year period. And there were something like 365 pedestrians killed at the signals, and some very large number of injuries. At the roundabouts, they had no fatalities at all. Remember, it's almost twice as many roundabouts, and no fatalities, and they had 35 injury crashes, which is a huge difference, you know, compared to the signalized intersections. In, in the U.S. now, we're probably, we're not too sure, but we're approaching 3, 4,000 roundabouts in the U.S. now, and there's only been one minor pedestrian crash at any roundabout, and happened at one, one of my very early ones. But that was an elderly woman driver, driving without her driving glasses, hitting another elderly lady, took to the hospital, sent her home because she only had bruises. And, and that's one of the other things that's important with roundabouts and pedestrians, is that if a pedestrian is gonna get hit, and a lot of times, the pedestrian is at fault, because they walk in front of vehicles, right? And, or they walk through the middle, and the driver does not expect a pedestrian in the circulating roadway, walking diagonally through an intersection. But that's the two ways that pedestrians get hit. But then you have the, the low speed, you know, that really simplifies the whole process, and, and there's a little bit more to, to the pedestrian issue than just that. You notice that, and I think Commissioner Brown raised this, about the location of the crosswalk, okay? What, what has happened at, at all roundabouts is the crosswalk is generally located one car length back from the roundabout. And that's done very, for a very important reason, and that is that what we're trying to do is separate the decision-making for the driver, such that he deals with the pedestrian first, then he moves forward and deals with vehicles within the roundabout. It's only a small separation, but it is a fiscal and time separation between the two, and that helps with the decision-making. Then, if there's, if it's a busy roundabout, and you have two cars stopped, and then the pedestrian can walk between the two stopped cars, which is the safest time to cross. Another reason Tom mentioned about roundabouts is they're much better for pedestrians, and that's because a signalized intersection, as a pedestrian, you walk up to the signal, and you have, you know, if it's red, you have to press the button, and you have to wait until you're allowed to cross, right? It's like, mommy, can I cross the road? And the signal says, mommy says, "No, not until I tell you." Okay? That's what a signal is, really. At a roundabout, you walk up to a roundabout, you look to see if there's a car coming, if there's not, you walk across. If there is a car coming, you need to make sure that car stops before you walk in front of it. And that's basically, you know, your decision as a pedestrian, right? Whereas at a signal, if you cross, right, you don't know if that car's approaching you that has the red light, is gonna stop at that red light. You don't know if that vehicle's making the left turn, is actually gonna stop or yield to you as it makes its left turn. Or the right turn on red driver, is he gonna take you out? Because he's looking left, and you're crossing on his right, right? So, with a roundabout, a pedestrian looks one way as he comes up to the roundabout, and he wants, say, wants to cross from the right-hand side to the left, he looks left. Then he gets into Splinter Island, and then he looks right, okay? One decision at a time, right? And even children, you know, can handle one direction of traffic, they can have problems with two directions of traffic. So again, we, we, we change that, you know, the, the searching that a pedestrian has to do for vehicle conflict.
And that's, and that's interesting. And what about ADA support? When someone has a signalized intersection, they hear the beeps and that sort of a thing, and obviously, they're not gonna have that here. So how's that handled?
Okay. The, I've been working with the access board, you know, I've known them for, for many years now. And I had a big input, because in Australia, I invented the wheelchair loop, I wrote the traffic signal standards for visually impaired people, and when I came here, I tried to get the U.S. board to accept it back in the early 90s. They only accepted my traffic signal standards that I wrote 35 years ago, two years ago, right? That was to separate the poles so that, you know, there's no confusion, that pole relates to that crosswalk, this pole relates to that crosswalk, right? And, and so forth. So, I've been very involved with that side of it. When it came to roundabouts, after many years of them, you know, something new for them, they had to get used to it, they had to learn about it, and they now consider one, low-speed one-lane roundabouts as fully accessible, okay? As long as you do certain things, you know, at the roundabout.
So they're saying that, that, that a one-lane roundabout is as accessible as, you know, the beeping signals and that sort of thing?
Well, they, they, well, their language is that a one-lane roundabout is, you know, is considered accessible to people with disabilities, okay? But a two-lane roundabout, where you have two lanes coming up to it, you need pedestrian-operated signal assistance. They haven't defined that as hawk signals or flashing yellow lights yet, right? But we have to put in some form of assistance where there are two lanes that have to be crossed at any one point. So, and then, they have other little things like around the corners, you see that, that orange goes around the corner? When you have a sidewalk around a roundabout between the crosswalks, you have to set, set it back two feet. So there's a minimum of a two-foot technical strip between the crosswalks. So visually impaired person caming around the corner can, can tell when he's, you know, when he's at the crosswalk and how, and, and he can cane around to the crosswalk on the other side.
Okay. And last question, could you talk for just a minute on what the bicycle flow is through there, and any, any issues in terms of drivers trying to go through a road and perhaps contacting the bicyclists?
Similarly with pedestrians, we have studies done on bicycle, you know, bicycle use at roundabouts, and it's a mixed bag, because a lot of the times is that, you know, the bicyclists take a risk, right, and drivers have problems seeing them. But in the U.S., we haven't had a bicycle crash at any roundabouts here. And back in, about 1999, I invented the bike ramps for the roundabout I was doing in the city of Davis. And I, the bike ramp is, you'll see them, ah, like, there's a positive example, and there. And the idea of a bike ramp is such, because as Tom said, we have different, bicyclists have different skill levels. And the confident bicyclists, the commuter bicyclists, they will not use a sidewalk system around the roundabout. They can usually ride through a roundabout at a very similar speed to cars can. And if they're going down the hill like Camino del Rio, they could even get through faster than what a car driver can, because they're skinny.
They'll take the lane, because they're.
Yeah, they'll take the lane, because they can do it just as fast, okay? But if, it's like Tom, when he's out with his children, he's not gonna have them ride through the roundabout, okay? Which, the ones he lives with are roundabouts that I designed anyway. And that, but they're low-speed roundabouts, but even with that, he's not gonna take his two children, which are less than 10 years old, through the roundabout. And they're the ones that will use the bicycle ramp, and then use the shared pathway around the roundabout. But in your case, you've got a slightly different scenario. Along Camino del Rio, you have a 10-foot shared pathway on, on the west side of the road. And so it comes, it's a little bit missing at the last block here, I don't know why that happened, but all the way from the top of the hill, all the way down to the last block, you have a 10-foot shared pathway that then goes around the corner and then goes north, and then it goes, proceeds south as well. So what you have right now, already built, is a shared pathway for the less experienced bicyclists or, you know, families, okay? And so, the question Tom and I discussed this afternoon outside was, since you have that pathway, which is accessible to every street along there, to all the properties along there, do you really need to put bike ramps at the roundabouts? Because all the, the less experienced people will be using the shared pathway, right? And so, Tom and I, recommendation, based on our discussion today, was not to put the bike ramps in, but to keep those people who, when they come out, they're subdivisions, aren't gonna get on the Camino del Rio anyway, because they'll use the shared pathway. So our, our recommendation is that we don't put the bike ramps in, that we encourage, like Stanford University's doing, like the Central Michigan University's doing, they're getting the bicyclists off the sidewalks when they put roundabouts in, and keeping them on the road. So the sidewalks are pedestrians, and the roads are for the bicyclists. So, different scenarios, you do different.
So you have bike ramps here, though?
Yeah, well, that was my original design, until I fully understood how extensive your shared pathway is, right? It's like, you know, all over the place, you, you have it, and you're building even more of it. So, from my perspective, it's better if the, you know, parents with children stay on the shared pathway and not even get on the road in the first place. And to encourage that, don't put the bike ramps in, so they stay on the shared pathway, and the commuters use the.
So you'll be eliminating these.
Yes.
Ramps, from the, when you go from the 30% design going forward, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Based on this discussion?
Yes.
And Tom, you're concurrence with that?
Can I ask a question? This is from an actual user of this area. If you look at it, right now, we use, we use this, we, we have a family.
Yeah.
Similar to Tom, I have two little boys. And the hardest thing about this intersection is, if you cross it, right, people go really fast on this road. And they, for some reason, when you decide to turn right, they don't watch what you're doing. So even if this is another, very broken up block, you have to be very careful, right? This first car right here, avoid from getting hit.
Yeah. That's why with a roundabout, that doesn't happen.
So then, in this design here, and this, as soon as you go away, this kind of.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Right here.
Yeah, you'll be forced to go around.
It was right there, just by moving the crosswalk, waiting at the intersection, maybe once, so.
Yes. That's why we do it, okay? But as Tom and I discussed this afternoon, on, on that corner, this, this is a larger radius than what you have out there now. And the reason for that was the design vehicle, which is a 65-foot truck, making that right turn and making the left turn, okay? And that's why the Central Island landscaping is not a perfect circle, because you have the big trucks making the left, right, and, and a WB-50 truck making every other movement, right? That doesn't mean the larger one can still do it, right? But for the left, right, that's what we're doing. Now, Tom pointed out this morning, this afternoon, is that, that, that is the major vehicle movement, and therefore, you can have a likelihood of faster vehicles. Even though they have to look, you have a residential street, and therefore, not very much traffic on the other side. So, what we're going to do is like put a, a truck apron on that corner. So, the BMWs in the world will have to go out on a similar radius to what they got now, but when the large trucks come along, their rear wheel only will go over that truck apron, just like it does in the center. So, that was a beauty of me coming out here today and going through with Tom, that, that was my standard design, but once I found out, you know, what was going on here, we're tailoring it more to your condition.
Thank you. Continuing, we'll go continuing right to left here. Question for Tommy, made a statement earlier that like, like Serra Motoso, that that intersection doesn't warrant fourways, based on our California.
That's correct, yeah, there's, there's actually warrants in the MUTCD for always stops.
And how about this intersection here, but Los Maris and Camino del Rio, is there warrants there, is it warranted?
This one was close, actually.
Close, but not.
Close, right.
So, so basically, it's roundabouts or nothing, but based on the warranting of our California.
Or signals, signals could be installed.
So it's a mute point about stop signs or signals?
I think it's a mute point, and, and I really, always stops in this particular location would, would not, I would not recommend. would not, I would not recommend them. People, we don't have a great success rate with always stops.
At the point without the warrants, without being warranted by our California traffic manual, then if we put it in there, then we're city liable.
Right, exactly.
So, we would not do it. So, basically, it's for traffic calming, it's roundabouts or it's as-is, in a way.
It's roundabouts at the intersections and I wouldn't call traffic signals, traffic calming, or even traffic management. I guess I'd call it traffic management.
I just want to make that point, you made a key point earlier, I just wanted to pull on that a little bit, that during your outreach, I'm heartened by the fact that you've got, with my pencil scale here, about 60 feet from the center of the roundabout to the nearest crosswalk, which I think is a lot more, more than one car length by my measurement, but I maybe just define it at a certain speed.
Some of the crosswalks are a little bit further away because you've got these enormous inlets on the corners.
Correct.
And to minimize your cost, right? Where I move the crosswalk a little bit further away than we would stand normally-
I mean, that's a good thing, I think it's good. The point I'd like to also make to some of the commissioners here is when my first task, when I got appointed here, was to review the La Pata EIR, all 1,200 pages of it. And a lot of the community came here then and they were really worried about Camino Del Rio getting, A, punched through, and B, the alignment of, there was a huge input between Toledo and Borston Ranch on the alignment of the La Pata. I mean, it went back and forth and every foot was counted with a special staff, task force within the city staff, run by the city manager, Mr. Scarborough at the time. So, there was a lot of concern by that community about La Pata. And then the fact that this was always in the plan to be cut through and everybody had to be asked, would you do your due diligence when you bought your house there? But the community's always had a concern about that last 500 foot being pushed through. And they were concerned about noise and speed when we reviewed the EIR for La Pata. I just want to bring that out to you, that that was a concern five or six years ago when we reviewed the roadway that's driving this. And the last point, I think I'm very heartened with, and I think my mantra always is to go with the neighborhood and what the people in the neighborhood wants. And it appears that the response is overwhelming based on the public outreach here, you've got 21 of 23 people that have come forward from the neighborhood that's going to be involved with supporting this design, so I'm very heartened by that. And I think community input has got to be respected based on that type of a number there that's pretty overwhelming. So, with that, I'll pass on my, that's my comments, a lot shorter than Eggleston and his timer, and we'll go.
I don't think so, I've got a timer here.
We're going to go on to Mr. Crandall.
Well, I'm going to be really brief. The questions that have been asked so far of them have been great, they've answered every question I had. They've shown their expertise and we're lucky to have you guys working on this and I respect your decisions and recommendations. And the safety factor, even though it was down at 18 for the survey, where would you put it on this design?
What was the safety factor, even though-
They were only concerned with 18 and I'm, that for me is where you start.
Right. Well, for me, I grew up in Australia and safety there is the number one issue for us. And it doesn't matter, you know, all our road design, it's always, you know, road safety. And so, I grew up in the environment. I come to this country, road safety is sort of, you know, hardly mentioned, you know? There's very little in the road, there's no road safety education, there's very little training on it, there's very little emphasis on road safety. And so, with that in mind, you, I can understand why road safety is a less of an issue because it's not something many people talk about. And with the number of deaths, see, I'm surprised that more people aren't talking about it. Because your fatality rate is, I don't know, five times higher than what it is in Australia, right? And that's because we focus on that. And we found, you know, roundabouts is a sort of like the safest thing we can do. And it is so, they're so good from the safety point of view is that the Federal Highway Administration recommends roundabouts as one of the nine safety treatments that they're pushing at this point in time. And signals are not one of them, nor are stop signs one of them, okay? And so, from the community's point of view, there's probably not been many crashes out there. I didn't see any evidence of crashes out there because it's a low-volume road. But as the volumes go up, then, you know, there is a, more vehicles means more conflicts, more conflicts means a higher probability of crashes occurring.
Very good.
And to, and to come back, there's one thing I needed to mention is about Commissioner Eggleston's comments about traffic calming and road capacity, basically what it boils down to. If you go back, there's a picture early in about La Jolla Boulevard, it's up in the top right-hand corner. There it is. See that top right corner, that's La Jolla Boulevard. That used to carry about 21,000 cars a day. And it was a five-lane road, okay? And I did a charrette back in 2002 and the community, like yours, they wanted two lanes, they wanted roundabouts, landscaping, and that's what I turned La Jolla Boulevard into. And the result of doing that, oh, when we did the charrette, one comment from the people was that they had to drive their kids across the road to go to school, to go to the beach or go to their friend's place because it was so dangerous for them. And they had a four-way stop and they had some signals there, but it's still way too dangerous. So, when this roundabout, or five roundabouts went in, one every block, the traffic volume went down a little bit because of the recession, but it's almost back to where it was, right? So, it's approaching 20,000 again, which is five times what you have out there now. And it'll be back two and a half times when your 8,000 arrives in 20 years. So, Tom was making the point, the road capacity is not dependent on the road, the number of lanes, it's depending on the intersection capacity. And so, here's La Jolla Boulevard, it's this very similar environment, very wide road. But the important thing here, when the roundabouts went in and the median strip went in, now we've got kids crossing the road without parents, right? That's the change that those five roundabouts, you know, in a row, one every block, 660 feet apart. That with the on-street parking, the landscaping, the five roundabouts, the speeds, the actual operating speeds there are now in the 15, 20 mile an hour range. So, now kids can cross without parents. That's the difference it makes.
Excellent, thank you very much. In fact, the report, I think in our general plan, Tom, you can speak forward, we only address intersection capacities and not road capacity. We rebuilt our transportation section in our general plan specifically for intersections for the record.
That's right, for capacity issues.
Yeah, for capacity issues. Mr. Wood?
I also have quite a lot of questions, but some of them have been addressed, so I hope that I don't take as much time, but still, I have many questions.
Mr. Eggleston has the record right now, so.
The Camino de Los Maris, going to the city boundary, is it going to ever go through anywhere or is it a dead-end road?
It, not in our lifetime, it won't go anywhere. It's essentially going to be, remain a dead-end.
Camino de-
It's going to be built beyond there, so.
De Los Maris is a primary arterial road, is it?
Correct.
And currently-
Actually, no, it's a secondary, excuse me, I don't have the-
De Los Maris is a secondary.
Correct.
And according to our mobility master plan, the Camino Del Rio is also secondary arterial.
It's correct.
And you label it as a collector, so do you propose to downgrade it to a collector road?
We, a collector is a different terminology. The secondary arterial is a terminology used according to OCTA's master plan of arterial highway. The collector definition, which I was using, is based on, is that ASHTO or?
Yeah.
It's basically a different definition system, but it basically means a roadway that's between a residential street and a primary arterial.
But you propose the road alignment will not meet the requirement of secondary arterial road?
No, what we're going to have to do is to comply with OCTA's eligibility requirements for certain grant funds, M2 grant fund, or M2 funds, we need to ask them for interim approval to have a change in classification, similar to what we did on El Camino Real to realign that road segment and implement that Class 1.
A collector road, Cabo Rio is a collector road, so they're quite different. But what's OCTA's position, have you talked to them about it?
I've talked to staff on a staff level, we haven't submitted our formal request, but as Commissioner Brown suggested, the capacity of a roadway and as we've included in our general plan is really constrained by the intersection control. So, all of the, I've talked to numerous staff at OCTA, they're not really concerned with the road segment itself, especially in this, on this road segments, there's zero side friction like driveways. So, it's a very free-flowing road between the intersections. So, I'm not concerned with them not approving it, but we would receive their approval before moving into the final design stage.
With Avina La Pata being built, it becomes a secondary outlet or evacuation route of the city. So, the Camino de Los Maris, it appears to be, it will go connecting to Camino Del Rio, it become essentially one link between this La Pata and Interstate 5.
Right.
But we're changing the category right around the roundabout. So, in your viewpoint, if that's true, then De Los Maris can be narrowed down too. Did you agree?
Correct, right. For, to transition to the intersection control, again, we're not decreasing the capacity of that roadway. Where the single-lane roundabout can accommodate above 20,000 cars per day, so we have more than enough capacity with the proposed design to accommodate the future projections, even conservatively, of what's expected on that roadway.
Now, on the design, approaching the roundabout, between the two directions, are they raised a meeting or are they just a painted area?
It will be, it will have, it'll be a changed physical, because as Michael alluded to, it'll be a concrete change, so we'll change the curb alignments. And it'll, there'll be striping delineation changes like you see with lane drops along other roadways, when you go from a two-lane to a one-lane configuration. It's governed by a guidance manual called MUTCD, so it'll conform with the state guidelines. But there will actually be a curb, there'll be a road reconfiguration as it approaches the roundabout, there'll be a split-aisle.
If we can show the layout again.
Sure, yeah. Oops, wrong way.
For the hazard pattern, looks like a center meeting approaching the-
Right.
-roundabout.
Right.
Are they raised?
Correct, it'll be a raised concrete meeting, landscape meeting.
Okay. What happens if some, a car is disabled there and it will block the whole traffic flow?
Through that segment where, well, Michael, you can, you can talk to that and all that in if I need you.
Well, first off, you've got an eight-foot buffer zone and then you've got an eight-foot bike lane, so you've got 16 feet coming up to the roundabout. In all, now, if a vehicle breaks down in this area-
Right.
Then you have to push him out of the road. Just like if a vehicle comes up to a traffic signal, right, and stops at the stop bar, that can't get started again, you know, at a signal, if it's only a two-lane road, you're caught, right, until that vehicle has got taken out of the way. At a signal, if it's a two-lane road with a left turn lane, then all those people wanting to get around that vehicle have to go through the left turn lane and make illegal maneuvers to get around that vehicle, right?
But because of the raised meeting, you don't have, you cannot do that.
Yeah. And it's, yeah, now, in all my years, I've not seen or heard of a vehicle stopping in that precise point between the crosswalk and the entrance to roundabout. It's never happened, you know, in my experience at all. Because you're trying to expect a vehicle to break down in one particular point, right? And that's very rare for that to happen, right, at an intersection, okay? But it can always happen, okay?
Also, I've talked to the OCFA engine drivers and they have no qualms about going over curbs, it doesn't slow them down much. So, if there was that particular rare instance when a car broke down in that one particular spot, a fire truck would essentially just mount the curb or even go on the other lane and go through there, so it wouldn't slow the emergency response down.
So, that curb will be mounted, it's not a straight curb.
Yeah, it's-
Well, it's going to be likely a six-inch curb, which is very manageable for an emergency vehicle, or even any car, really, but.
Okay. A question for the city attorney, this road seems to have a system importance, it's not just a local street. So, for the public input, we notify the property owners within 300 feet from the right-of-way. But in fact, a lot more people are affected and they're using this road. To make analogy, every people within that water shed in any local street feeding that road, and those people living on the street, they would use it. Should they also be notified and their input to be heard?
Well, there's no legal requirement with respect to this type of improvement that property owners within a specific radius be given notice, like there would be with a discretionary permit, like a use permit or a zone change or something like that, where the government code prescribes the notice requirements. In this particular case, there is no legal requirement, so it's really a question of policy. And so, there's no reason why the city couldn't expand the notice requirements if it determined as a matter of policy that it was important to have, to capture a larger group of people for purposes of obtaining comments, but that's not a legal requirement.
Thank you.
Commissioner, if I might add though, we're fortunate enough to have a press that is interested in the subject and they've been diligent about writing articles on the subject, on this subject, and helping inform the public of the workshops, including this meeting. In addition, there's a mail, or an email list for people that are interested in the Avenue La Pata construction project. And they've been, the project management team has actually noticed that distribution list of the workshops which we've had on the subject. So, we have actually done our best to try and get the word out, notify the public, that's been my objective the entire time since the inception of the project, was to try and notify as many people in the public and the community as we could, not only the immediate community, but the community as a whole. We want as many people as we can, we're trying to get the word out. As I mentioned, Fred and the press in general have been assisting us with that, so we've been doing our best on that subject.
Okay. And I'd just like to add to that, you want to be careful, you know, there is no legal requirement in any country that I'm aware of that the people in the surrounding area have to be notified about a change in the road works. Because, and the reason for that, from my perspective, is that if you start requiring notification of people within 300 feet or 500 feet or whatever, whenever you're going to make a change in traffic control, then every time you want to change a stop sign, you're going to have to go through it. Every time you change road signings, speed limit signs, no parking signs, you could end up, you know, having, spending a lot of time with public participation and not getting anywhere.
So, we actually went extra step to notify the residents around it, we're not required to notify them at all.
But Tom's already done two public workshops and I've been doing this for 20-odd years in the US. And I can tell you that you can send out letters to everyone, you know, in the whole neighborhood. And if you get 30 people to turn up, you're doing very well. Because most people really don't care, or they like roundabouts, you know, they don't really care about it, okay? And so, I would love, when I do a charrette, I would love 200 people to turn up for it. to turn up for it, but it's, it's an impossibility to do that, right? And so we have, the people Tom got, that is pretty common anywhere in this country, from Hawaii to Miami, that if you get 20, 30 people turn up at a public workshop, you're doing very well. And from my experience, if, if that group approves it, they're the activists in your community, it always gets approved by the, you know, and gets built.
Okay. Well, I have one more question. Can the same goal to be achieved by a, still by a roundabout design, but without narrowing down Del Rio? In other words, keep it full length, just like
Wow.
De las Maras. You still have a roundabout, you still have a free flow, you don't have a signal, so the, the noise doesn't go up and down so extremely.
Well, you will have a problem there, because you'll have two lanes that have to merge to go into a roundabout, they'll go through the roundabout, and then the fast drivers will go on the, in, outs, in the median side lane, the slow drivers typically go to the outside lane, or if the slow driver decides to stay at the median side lane, because he doesn't want to keep going in and out through roundabouts, he will stay in the middle, in the median side lane, and the fast drivers will go around the inside of him. And so when we do roundabouts like this, particularly two roundabouts, we always keep the number of lanes come at one roundabout, consistent with the number of lanes all the way through to the second one, because we don't want people weaving in and out every time they come up to a roundabout, because weaving leads to crashes.
But there's a little roundabout in City of Irvine of Santa Canning. It's, it's pretty small, and it has two lanes, and the people weaving in and out. I drove it around a few times.
Yeah.
It works well, I don't see much problem.
Well, I, I've been a traffic engineer for a long time, and I've, I've been to intersections, and I think they're safe, but when I get the crash data, right, it's not safe, right? Because I, I keep hearing from community, people, oh, you know, this is a dangerous intersection. You get the crash data, there's not that many. Or another one, nah, that's all right, we never see anything happening, but when you get the crash data, you find out there's quite a few crashes happening. Because as a, a casual user of any part of the road network, the likelihood of you seeing a crash occurring is very low. But as a traffic engineer that looks, gets all the data for, for a three year period, you can get quite a different picture out of it. And if you have a small, relatively small roundabout that's got two lanes going through it, you know, two in each direction, I'd be, I would almost reckon you'd have some crashes there.
Okay. Thank you. Chris Smith.
Yeah, I've got a lot of questions about this too, and I don't know if we have time to get through everything I'd like to know about it. My first question is, why wasn't this a study session instead of a public meeting? We're, we're being confronted with some very difficult decision making without a lot of time and effort and study. I did a lot of traffic work at Cal State Fullerton when I was there, as a campus architect, and we, we would do real time computer flows on streets and all kinds of stuff before we would make decisions like this. And I'm, I'm not seeing that tool being afforded to me. What I'm seeing is a solution that everybody says is so great, but, but I'm, I'm not exactly convinced. I'm sure there's other commissioners here that are feeling probably like I am, that might be good, but I'm not convinced. And here I am in a situation now where I've got to recommend this to the city council. So my first question is, what does the city council know about this? Do they know that we're in this position to recommend this to them? Is that an expectation from the city council that we're doing this?
City council funded the project, so they know that we were going to study these intersections in particular and the reason why we're studying them. And in that description of that CIP project, we did describe that one of the alternatives could be roundabouts. In addition, they've been informed of the workshops which we've been holding, and I'm not sure if the city manager has shared with them all of the results, but they've been aware of the process which we've established and, and
Well, so there, this wouldn't be a surprise for us to bring this forward to them, though, from what you're saying.
No.
Okay.
And the timeframe was also explained.
In that vein, Michael, we actually had a study session, I think you were here, when we presented the design of, of roundabouts here in a study session, and in fact, they in turn presented that to city council about a year ago, a whole presentation specifically on roundabouts.
Well, that was actually, I think, an educational video we dropped before you.
Yeah, you know, that
And it was anticipation for this. I did mention that we were going to be in taking this study, and one of the possibilities was to have roundabouts as the intersection control if the community preferred them.
Right. Well, I guess my question to Michael, the expert, is what intersection is not a good candidate for a roundabout?
That's usually one where you cannot get a good design at that intersection within the right of way constraints that you have, with the volumes that you have to accommodate at that intersection.
So volumes are an issue? If volumes are big, a roundabout's not so hot?
Yeah. Well, no. I, I've, I've did a roundabout in Melbourne, Australia, 90,000 cars a day going through that roundabout. So I can design a roundabout for literally any volume you want. In England, they've got roundabouts with 6,000 vehicles an hour going through it.
Yeah.
Right? So you, and that's their three, four lane roundabout. So you can handle an enormous volume of traffic through a roundabout. The Arc de Triomphe, which is more a circle than a roundabout, 14,000 cars an hour go through that, but that's eight lanes wide.
Mm-hmm.
So the volume is not the issue. The issue is that for a, a predicted volume, which is normally most roundabouts are based on predicted volume, for the predicted volume, can, that volume requires X number of lanes to, to provide an acceptable level of service. If you cannot provide that number of lanes, then you don't do the roundabout, because it, it will not handle the traffic.
Okay.
But it's a general rule, and I've proved this by, you know, before and after studies on roundabouts, a typical roundabout has about 30% plus higher capacity than the same signalized intersection. All but yet, the roundabout doesn't have the turn lane, so it actually has fewer lanes than the signal.
Yeah. I, I think that roundabouts have some real advantages in certain, certain situations, and I think they have some real disadvantages in others. And the, the, the fine line here is, for me anyway, is, is this the, the one with the advantages or disadvantages? I'm concerned thinking about going down, I'm, I'm on the inside driving, and I'm coming into this roundabout, and I have a bike on my right side, and I'm coming into this roundabout, and the bike wants to go through and continue straight, but I want to make a right hand turn. Doesn't that seem like a difficult situation right there?
Nope. Nope. That's, that's why you'll see on all the bike lanes, when they come to a roundabout, this is, whether it's in Holland, or in Germany, or in Australia, or in the U.S., whenever you have a bicyclist, a bike lane next to a vehicle lane coming up to a roundabout, you always terminate the bike lane prior to the pedestrian crossing, and you force the bicyclists to claim the lane. That's, that's the national standards in this country.
That's the plan here?
Yes. Okay. And the reason we do that is, is this is logic for the reason you talked about.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But the Dutch, right, years ago, the Dutch put a bike lane in, in a couple of roundabouts where the bike lane went in parallel to the vehicle, and within 12 months, they had a couple of bicycles killed.
Yeah, okay. Well, that, that makes some sense, because I was trying to figure out how that would happen without, I mean, because the last thing we want to do is make it less safe for bicycles, and, you know, we have to deal with the bike traffic, we have to deal with the car. I'm, I'm still kind of upside down on this, because there's a lot of traffic being planned for this whole La Pata deal, and here we are pinching it all down to one lane in each direction, and we're, we're calming it, and we're slowing it down, and yet, we've got all these cars, and these two pieces just don't seem to go together, except, except if you're a neighbor and you live in the neighborhood and you want them, you want, you want this all to slow down and be quiet. Then it makes a lot of sense. So, you know, the question that we were looking at in the bigger broad, than you were mentioning it yourself, which is, there's, there's a lot of expectation, there's going to be a lot of traffic coming from these new developed areas into San Clemente through this, and it's going to be, you might, you might say secondary, but it's going to be a major secondary artery of, of, of traffic. And it seems to me that that's in conflict with what we're doing with this design that's going to pinch this down. This is my problem. I'm having a problem with that. And I, I'm, I'm not smart enough, and I'm not familiar enough, and I don't have the experience enough to say that that overriding traffic flow, that demand, the reason that we're doing this to begin with is that we wanted to make this, this very powerful, very fluid connection between these two communities. And then now what we're doing is we're putting a couple of marbles in the, in the middle of this, of this flow. Seems to be awkward to me. It's, it's just really difficult. I, I, you know, I don't know if I can recommend it or not, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm wondering, can we, instead of spending lots of money, because this is $800,000 kind of thing, could, could this be implemented in striping first? No. You have to, you have to go the whole enchilada, huh?
No, no. Sacramento and a couple of other places have put in temporary roundabouts where it's striping, but you have to put in spike down curbing, because you don't have that, the concrete there. Drivers are just drive straight over the top of paint, right? And that, they've done that in England, they have painted roundabouts, and you look at the pictures from England, people just driving right over the paint. So it's like, it's a waste of time doing it. You have to have that concrete. So by the time you go out there and do a lot, the striping that you need for the roundabout, and you have to do it correctly to the national standard, so there's quite a bit of work you have to do, you put down all the curb extensions and the splinter island in spike down curbing.
Because you're saying it doesn't really work.
It can be done. It can be done.
It can be done, but it doesn't work for it.
Are you, are you about done with your question, Michael?
No, I'm not. The, the other question I have is that this seems to be a little bit of a tail wagging a dog to me, where, where, we're making changes to the intersection before the intersection and the connections are all made. And, and would seem to me that, that you might want to just let this thing connect and do what we need to do, and then see how it works, rather than to say, well, it's not going to work and we got to do this, and then find out for whatever reason, after spending this money or whatever, that maybe, maybe it wasn't the right solution. So again, that makes me uncomfortable.
Well, it depends on, on the approach you want to take. You take the proactive approach, which is what the city is doing right now, by looking to the future and saying, this is what's coming, we need to accommodate it and, and manage that now, or you take the reactive approach, well, we, we build it, see what happens, then we go out and fix it. So that's, in, in traffic engineering, that's, that's two ways we do it, that's common. And you have some people doing the proactive way, solve the problem before it occurs, others fix it after it occurs.
This La Pata connection has been in the works for a real long time. How come this has come up right now? Why wasn't this in the hopper years ago when, when all of this was being thought of? It seems like it's kind of a last minute thing.
Well, it's not a last minute thing, but it's a thing which
It's time has come.
I think the timing of La Pata was very uncertain up until a few years ago. Honestly, the, the funding, there's a huge funding gap of over 25 million that wasn't accounted for, and honestly, this, myself, none of the city engineers could even guess when that gap of funding would be secured. So once there was some confidence that the project was actually moving forward, the engineering, the engineering management staff really sat down and looked, okay, what's going to be the impacts of La Pata coming through? Couple of key points I want to make. Is, is La Pata, if you drive up to the end of where our La Pata ends right now, near Saluda, it's 90% complete, it, it's coming through, it's definitely going to be opened in the fall. We know that the, that traffic is coming, particularly when I-5 is backed up, there is going to be heavy traffic coming down La Pata. To speak to the volumes on this roadway, this is not, fortunately, this is for the residents, the adjacent residents, this is not going to be the primary flow for the, the vehicles going down La Pata. The primary flow coming into San Clemente will be to come down La Pata and then turn on Avenue de Vista Hermosa, and then continue on, and then go down Avenue de Pico. So those, that's where a majority of the, of the traffic flow will be. They're projecting like upwards to 27,000 vehicles in the future coming down La Pata. We've said, this is projected to be up around 8,000, so it's definitely not the majority flow.
Okay, so
And then the volume, the volume again is going to be something similar to what we're experiencing on Presidio.
Okay. My last question, two part question. Does the city have this money available to, to make this improvement in the bank ready to go?
Yes, it's funded.
And if we give it the go ahead and the city council gives it a go ahead, do we have enough time to get these improvements completed before the La Pata connection happens?
Well, before the Del Rio portion happens, we believe we do. It's
Before this, we get that traffic.
Before the Del Rio gap, correct.
So we got, we're ahead of the curve on that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. With that, I guess we can stop questions of the staff and open the public hearing. We have one person who wishes to speak, Mr. Brendan Miller.
You can guess what I'm going to say. Do it. There's a couple of things I want to address. Number one, well, overall, I wish I could clone the residents of Forrester Ranch by the tens of thousands and distribute them across Orange County, because it would be a drastically different, more livable place that will sustain the additional 1.4 million average daily trips that will be created in just 20 years in this county. That's what's predicted. And these kinds of projects are a necessity. This is an important first step for several reasons. Number one, it's an important first step to save the sanctity of the Forrester Ranch neighborhoods. I've walked every street there, I've biked every street there. They're beautiful. And this is a necessity to enable those neighborhoods to remain quiet, livable, pleasant places. Now, they, as a first step, it may be the case that in between the roundabouts, the cars are still going to speed. The solution is not to eliminate these roundabouts and put in traffic signals, but rather add more roundabouts at more intersections. That's how you force the motorists to change their behavior. And this statement is a nice segue into the Ladera Ranch problem. Wayne's right. It's dicey. And the reason why it's dicey is because the developer tried to hybridize a true complete streets approach with the classic suburban development with wide collector roads. Those collector roads that enter, that are regulated by the roundabouts are at least two car widths wide, they have left turn pockets, and so you come around curves at a high rate of speed, and all of a sudden, bam, you've got an intersection. Thank God, it's a roundabout and it's not a stop sign, or people would die there. But that's the problem with Ladera Ranch. Now, sorry. Okay. Examples of road noise impacts are the Starbucks patio and Antoine's Cafe on the weekends. No one really enjoys sitting there. The traffic noise is phenomenally horrible. And yet, if we had roundabouts, then the motorists would behave differently. It would not be zoom, screech, stop, zoom, screech, stop. And this is the behavior that occurs as a result of intersections regulated by stop signs and signals. We see that everywhere. Signs and striping don't work. The Highway Design Manual for California states that roadway striping is known to not significantly appreciate the number of people willing to bike on a roadway. It just doesn't work. So...
Thank you.
Can I make one quick point?
Quick.
About the Association of Pedestrian and Bicycle Professionals webinar that was presented at the city, hosted by OCTA in the city. They had images there of professionals that had gone to the Netherlands. And they made the observation that even I didn't think of. There's almost no signage telling motorists and people what to do. And the reason is that the infrastructure and the concrete is designed to tell them what to do naturally. You don't need the sign pollution. So, thank you.
For that, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, we have another one?
Yeah, I didn't sign it. I apologize. I can fill it out afterwards. Right off of Brillante. So I actually walk around all over the place and I use it. It's left internally and every single day. My wife uses it every single day on Sarmiento so I take my kids to school. So this is a really big issue to both of us. I'm, I didn't get a chance to vote in the survey because I missed the planning forum. But we're very excited, I'm very excited about having a roundabout, one for beauty in the community. Just makes it look a lot nicer. It keeps it looking like a residential area as opposed to a regular kind of thoroughfare, which everyone in the residences didn't want Del Rio to go through because they didn't want to have that to be a major ulterior, ulterior, or turn into one just by chance, even though it wasn't intended to be that. One of the other things I wanted to make mention, make it real fast, is one of the things I noticed about De los Maris is that's like a drag strip in the middle of the night. You hear cars down there, and my kids are always kind of laughing, oh, there goes another drag race, there goes another drag race. You put it in a roundabout, that'll kill that immediately. You put it in a stoplight, they'll just drag race right through it. I mean, we hear them all the time, all you can see them, where they drive onto the grass and do donuts on the grass and then shoot out of there. So that's a big issue to us as well. When I saw the roundabout, it's one of the first things I thought, like, hey, it's going to kill that whole end of that road as a drag strip. So that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Please, appreciate your input and please, yeah, fill out the card for this short signature. With that one now, we will close the public comment. And any other debate on this? I'm, I'm going to be, it's late, we've had a lot of questions. I'm in support of the project. It's well-designed. It makes the intense. For the record, Camino de los Maris was always intended to be cut through to Lopata. That was extensively discussed when we went through the EIR for Lopata, because a lot of your, a lot of your residents were here that night. It's something you should have known, it was always in the plan. Okay. So with that, any other discussion? Okay.
No, no discussion, just...
Okay. You have a, you have a discussion for you?
Yeah, I do. Thank you. Okay, so my, my thought on this still is that the traffic circle at Camino de los Maris and Camino de Del Rio just isn't necessary. We've got Veracruz and Camino de los Maris, it works fine with signals. I, I'm down there quite a bit myself. I've never seen an issue. It works just fine. I do see some validity to the Sarmiento so traffic circle. After the consultant presented the information, I, I had a change of mind, change of heart on it, and the effectiveness of it and how it really works. I hadn't had that sort of education before and I appreciated that. But I stand on my, on my opinion that the, the De los Maris intersection, putting that traffic circle or traffic oval, as it will end up, is more of a disruption in continuity and flow along that corridor. And yes, that road is a dead end now. It will connect, maybe not in our lifetime. My grandfather told me Pico wouldn't connect in our lifetime. Guess what? I drive it every day. It's connected, it's connected well, and it'll continue to be connected probably in my lifetime, in my kids' lifetime as well. So with that said, I would definitely support a component of this project, the smaller intersection, Sarmiento so, but not the, the larger of the two.
Mr. Ruhl.
Just to clarify, if I understand this, you're asking us to, this is a 30% approval, so we're basically sending to council that we, that the basic approach, we like or don't like, and we're going to see a final approval later on? Is that correct?
The plan is not for you to see a final approval. The plan is for you tonight to recommend to city council the approval of the concept plans and also the road guide as shown on that location map.
Very good. Well, I'm actually in favor of the plans, you know, as, as they are. I think, I, I like what I'm hearing from the, the traffic engineers. I think it's well-studied. I think they have a pers- perspective that, where they see things from the eyes of someone who looks at traffic as opposed to us who sees things with eyes from, someone who looks at it from a driver's perspective. I think those are two very different perspectives. I think that this kind of a design is one that addresses how people actually respond and behave, rather than how we would hope that they respond and behave to signage, for instance, and striping. And that's a good thing. I am delighted about the notion that we can go down to one lane but have more throughput because people are constantly moving through the intersection as opposed to stopping and starting. I will say too, in terms of biking and the roundabouts, I'm a scaredy cat biker and I live right by that roundabout in North Beach. And I'm surprised at how happy and confident I am going through that. I actually, you know, I'm riding right next to cars and passing by cars, and I'm, I'm, I'm surprised frankly, because, because I am such a tentative biker. But I think that that's, it's evidence that these are good for bikers as well. So I'm very much in favor of the project and I hope we end up voting to move it forward.
Okay. Did I miss you or did you decide to come in late over there?
No, I came in late here. I'm a, I'm a fan of roundabouts with certain, in certain circumstances. I grew up with a roundabout for 18 years when I lived there. And however, with the 14,000 homes, the amount of traffic coming in through there, we're talking here lots, lots about theory. I'm talking really about reality. I think this is going to be, it's going to be more than double, it's going to be triple or more, and I'm not going to be able to support the project.
Okay, I'm, we're going to go continue on right to left. I am going to support the project. As the traffic engineer work put it out, based on our manual for traffic guidance, it's either roundabouts or nothing for this issue, for this, these roads based, because they don't warrant four-way stop signs, they don't warrant signal lights, so there's no other traffic control mechanism available. A, B, the capital improvement program was approved by this planning commission with these roundabouts in the budget last May and approved by the council. So it's been budget, you know, budget approved, it's, there's money available. I think it's a very good design and it's going to help the residents up there and balance out its, its role in life when Lopata gets cut through. Mr. Prandell.
I also am in favor of the project and it's based on the fact that I think they proved their case in their presentation. They have the facts of the data. It takes for the speeds, the traffic flow, the experience of what these roundabouts can do and how they operate. And I had some assumptions and unfounded ideas when we started and they convinced me that those were invalid and I support the project because they proved it.
Thank you. Mr. Ruhl.
I have a mixed opinion about this project. I recognize this is probably a good design. I rely on our traffic engineer and our special, specialist to come up with a good solution to our traffic issue. But I think both roads, Camino de Del Rio and Camino de los Maris were over-engineered. We spent a lot of money on this infrastructure and now we're spending more money to fix them. I don't think it's a good thing to do. So I, I'm leaning toward delaying while we can continue to study it and maybe try, try to figure out some other way to cut the cost of the design to achieve same or similar result. Or we delay it until Del Rio got a connector to Lopata, see what happens, and then come up with some solution to fix that issue. I feel that this road is part of that master circulation plane and it's, it has a systematic importance. So if we simply listen to some neighbors right near to the road, of course, most, many neighbors will say, not in my backyard. I understand their concern, but it is intended to be a thoroughfare. So to summarize it, I, I will not be in so, in support of this at this moment.
Let me jump in real quick. We're just giving a recommendation. It's going to go to city council either way, is correct?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. No, it's gone. Correct.
It's gone either way.
Yeah.
So does this matter?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to recommend, raise different alternatives you can recommend? You can recommend intersection design.
You have to recommend something and so...
Support that or...
Yeah, okay. Hey, I'm a tipping point on this one. This is fun. I got to tell you, I feel like I'm in one of those Hollywood movies where I got a little devil up here and an angel up here and they're going back and forth in my head. And I'm thinking, this is good, this is bad, this is good, this is bad. And am I skeptical of this solution? Yes. Do I think it would be something that would be my first choice? Probably not. Am I willing to support it? Well, yes, I am. City's got the money to do it. We've got an engineering plan going on. And I'll tell you why I'm supporting it. Because I think it's good to get some of these out and about. Not around about, but out and about. And I, I think that the proof is always in the pudding. I'm a big believer in that. And I think this would be, this is a good test. This is a good litmus test. We've got the experts saying it's going to work. We've got the neighbors thinking that's like. And I'm going to go with, I'm going to go with the good side of this. So I'm going to support it.
Okay. Let's call for a vote. All in favor of recommending to the city council the 30% solution, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Oh, no, this is a straw vote or are we going to do this, go for a vote? You want a motion in a second?
I do, and actually if you could include that second recommendation as well.
Which recommendation? Okay.
Yeah, or just approve the recommendations in the agenda.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendation on the Camino de Del Rio intersection improvements and, what's the second, and restriping Camino de Del Rio from four lanes to two lanes with a center turn lane from Camino de los Maris to 500 feet east of Caie. Precipico? Precipio? Okay, I have a motion, a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Three passes for three. Okay. There is no old... Hey, thank you. Torturous.
Michael, thank you for the great work.
Yeah, great design, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
My recommendation is, if you, you don't have to believe me, just go down to La Hoya Boulevard in San Diego and look for yourself.
Okay.
We know where you live, Michael.
Yeah. Florida. Reports to Commissioner and staff, tentative future agenda. Mr. Petches, anything to share there?
No.
Very quickly report, we are having the first meeting of the Lining Ordinance Subcommittee tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. Tentatively, the traffic task force was scheduled for the 18th. It might be rescheduled because that's a city holiday, I think. Martin Luther King, I believe, right? So there might be a, a rescheduling there for the traffic task force. Anything from...
Coastal Advisory meets next week on the 14th.
Okay. Agenda's not out yet, they're still coming.
I have just one thing for the future agendas. I would, I would urge staff to make the vacation rental issue a priority as soon as possible.
I think...
More than a study session, no. I mean, we, after the study session, we, we need to make decisions.
Do we even need a study session?
Well, it's, yeah, we do.
It's already arranged, yeah.
It's already arranged now.
It happened at the council announcement, so there's a lot of people coming, so...
Okay. Based on the council action last night, I'm sure we'll be, the staff will be moving forward at full speed, I assume, there with other issues that are coming.
I think, Wayne, that the council also made it a priority to move on this, so we understand that.
And if there's nothing else, I will move that we adjourn to the study session to be held at 6:00 PM on January 20th, 2016, at city council chambers at city hall located 100 minute Presidio, San Clemente, California.
I have a motion to adjourn, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Edgar, no, pardon, sorry, Commissioner Blackwell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, passes.